All right, good evening everyone. Welcome to Town Hall. We are going to dive into a work session. We have our bond counsel here. Attorney Karen Grande is going to walk us through the bond anticipation notes and the legal documents associated with that. So with that said, Karen, go ahead.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much for having me here tonight. Pleased to be here to go through the bond anticipation note documents. So this is the very first part of your financing for the school bonds that were authorized by the voters. $150 million for the high school athletic facilities and various related facilities. And so what the town has determined to do in order to best make use of the school housing aid that is received from the state is issue some short-term notes. And then the town will be issuing the long-term debt subsequent to that. Part of the rules from the Rhode Island Department of Education are that you don't start receiving your state housing aid on debt service until, one, you're in bonds, and then, secondly, until a project is complete. And so for that reason, among others, most often municipalities stage the financing and issue short-term obligations for starters, and then roll those into longer-term obligations. And so these notes is $55 million. They are one-year notes. They bear interest at 4%. The investors did give the town a bond premium, which effectively reduces the interest rate that you are paying to about 3%. There was a public bid opening. There were actually 10 bidders for the note, so there was quite a bit of interest in the town's debt obligations, and you know, you just, you did very, very well. So we have a pile of documents here. So these are tax-exempt bond anticipation notes. And what that means is that in the hands of the investors, the interest that they earn is exempt from federal income taxes. If they also happen to be a Rhode Island resident, it's also, the interest is exempt from Rhode Island income taxes. So this is a very nice thing. It enables you to borrow at lower interest rates than you could find on a commercial basis. The, you know, issue with that is that the federal government really doesn't like tax-exempt bonds because it represents a revenue loss to the federal government. And you may or may not have heard that as part of the Big Beautiful Bill in Washington that for a while, they actually had some provisions in the legislation that would have, you know, impaired the ability for certain issuers, mostly 501(c)(3) corporations, from issuing tax-exempt bonds. But for a while, even, you know, governmental entities, it was in play where we might have lost the ability to issue tax-exempt bonds. So luckily, that language was removed from the Big Beautiful Bill. And, you know, cities and towns such as South Kingstown are still able to freely benefit from the tax-exempt interest rates. So I think what I'm going to do is I'm going to describe each document, and then I'll walk it up to the council president. The council president signs these documents because under the Bond Act, and, well, under the Bond Act, you have to have designated officers. And for communities like South Kingstown with this form of government, it's traditionally the president of the council and the director of finance. And the director of finance, we went through in advance of the meeting and had some things signed up already so we could move a little bit more quickly through the agenda this evening. But I'm going to start off with a document that's called the Signature and No Litigation Certificate and Certificate of Delivery and Payment. Aside from the Bond Act and the resolution that you passed authorizing the issuance of the bonds and the notes, you know, exercising the authority granted by the voters, this is the major authorizing document. And I'm actually going to bring, yes, I'm going to bring one up to you so you can, well, I'll bring them all up to you, actually. I know how to describe this. And add it. Three copies, because we get three times, and pass them around a little bit. So as I was saying, it's the major authorizing document. It recites who the purchaser of the notes was, which is Bank of America Securities. It has the interest rate. It recites the information regarding the Bond Act and how it was approved by the voters and the purposes for which the bond anticipation notes are being issued. It says that there's no litigation pending or threatened challenging the issuance of the notes, so that would have an adverse effect on the ability of the town to pay the notes. There's nobody challenging the boundaries of the town or the right of the officers to their offices. There's a basic tax covenant in there to do all things in your power in order to maintain the tax-exempt status of the notes. And that's pretty much it. And it needs to be signed in multiple places. Yes?
I did, it was of interest to me when you, when you were discussing the bond premium at 3%. And looking, in looking at those documents, I note that the rate is listed as 4%.
Correct.
And I'm wondering if you could explain to me why that is.
Yes, it's not a super simple explanation. I've done it a few times, so I think I can get through it. So, so bond and investors have ideas about what the market is going to be doing on a forward-going basis. And I'm going to explain this as if we're doing a bond, because I think it's easier, a little easier for me at least than talking about it as a note. So investors think that interest rates are going to go up. They've thought that for about the last 15 years, and stubbornly, those interest rates just stayed nice and low for a long time, but they are starting to creep up. And so investors would say, "Well, I think rates are going up. I think rates are going to be going up to maybe as high as 5%, and I'm going to be holding this investment for a while. And if I, you know, a future purchaser is not going to want to buy a bond from me if the interest rate on it is 4%." And so what they want to do is they want to have the face interest rate be 5%, but the market at that point in time is 4%. And so what they do is they pay what you call a bond premium at closing so that when the town takes that into account, effectively, instead of paying 4%, the town is going to be paying 3%. So there's this inverse relationship between the interest rate and the price and the yield on a bond or a note. And so if they pay some premium upfront on a 4% coupon, that's what they call it, the interest rate that's actually written on the bond or note, then it brings the effective rate down to 3%. The opposite thing happens if you're buying or selling bonds at a discount, which is they'd be paying you less than the face value, less than 100 cents on the dollar for the bond or the note.
So Brian, does this mean that this will save us money? And about how much money would that save us?
That I'm not sure of. It will save money. So we're, we're in essence getting that, I'm just going to use the round number of 500,000. We owe that 500,000 as part of our interest back. That 4% rate is at 4%. We're getting that upfront. So we're going to be able to invest that in, in our bank account, earn, call it 4% interest on that for the next 12 months. And that, we'll have that in addition to the 500,000 to go towards that interest when we have to make the payment. So it is, not only do we get the 500,000, but we can get interest on it for the next 12 months.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Brian, before the bands were issued, you had sent us a memo a couple of weeks ago saying that you thought the effective rate was 3.19. Is that, did we do better than that?
There's about three different rates on the form. One is 3.14, one is 3, as Karen noted, and one is the 4%, which is noted. There are a lot of ways to slice and dice this, as Karen was saying, but one of the noted was 3.14. How it works out, what we're actually paying will be the 3%. But there's, you see a few different rates on there, between the 4%, the 3.14, and the 3.
Right. And sometimes the financial advisor will do different calculations. So there's a thing called a true interest cost. There's another one called a net interest cost. They're all very close, but it depends on like whether you include your cost of issuance as part of your borrowing rate. So that's why they tend to vary in the presentation. Yes?
I appreciate your question, Patty, because it's a really, it's really spot-on. Because the documents don't really outline that process, that we would be paying, in essence, 3% because the investor is giving a, this is weird, there's only me on and it's beeping like that. Anyway, so where would that process be outlined? So if you didn't listen to this work session on this day to understand that the actual interest rate on the bond is not 4% for the note, where would, where would that be detailed?
Thank you.
Because I believe you, but I just...
Yeah, it's in actually a few places. The, this document, which I can, again, you know, pass around up there, this is called the town's official statement, and it's the disclosure document to investors regarding the issuance of the notes. It's kind of similar to a corporate prospectus. And it has all the information regarding the town and its finances and the purpose for the notes. It also has the principal amount and the interest rate and the re-offering yield, and it has sources and uses, where you're using the money for. It has, yeah, information regarding the competitive sale and the underwriters' discount. So this is the document, and this gets posted on the internet, actually. There's a website called Emma. You might have heard Corporate Securities is a website called Edgar. But for Municipal Securities, it's Emma, which is the Electronic Municipal Market Access website. It's run by the Municipal Securities Rulemaking Board, and that's another place where all the pricing information, price, yield, interest rate, et cetera, it's all posted on the MSRB's website called Emma.
But that is not something that the town council and the director of finance are signing off on, or are they?
Yes, the director of finance is signing off on it. This is a document that...
Okay.
...was produced by the town's... What about... It was produced by the town's, primarily by the town's municipal advisor, Public Financial Management. Our firm also assisted with that, reviewed it, revised it, gave it comments. The town produced a lot of, if you look at it, there's a ton of financial information regarding the town in that document. So yes, that is the town's document.
Karen, are these documents that they're signing, public documents?
Yes. They're public documents. They are publicly available. You know, there is a preliminary official statement produced in advance of the sale, and that was circulated to investors and, again, on the internet, because that's how things are done these days. In the olden days, everything was, you know, paper. And so we would print boxes and boxes of those official statements and the underwriters, investment bankers would have those boxes shipped around to their customers all over the country.
So if it's a public document, just thank you, everybody. Just, this is my last question, I believe. If it's a public document, where will that be located and searchable? Because it's not something that we've seen on the council. We're always flipping through it right now. So where would that be?
Well, she just answered that question. It's on this Emma database.
No, but it can also...
I heard her say that. I'm just curious.
If you go to Google and you search E-M-M-A...
Oh Karen, we'll put it on our website.
MSRB. It'll take you right there.
This school, the school building project website would be the most appropriate place.
Yeah, we'll put it on our website. That's why we're doing it in public.
Right. I love that we're doing it in public. I just didn't want the document that we've never seen to just go on Emma, and then we don't have any idea how to use it or look at it. That's all.
It's not a question of the document being available on Emma. It's, we want to have it somewhere accessible for residents if they have any questions. That's all. So I, yeah, I would say the school building project website would be the best place.
Council President, can I just add something to this?
Go ahead.
So the reason we're doing this here tonight is really unusual. Karen, could you please show your mic? Thanks.
All right.
The reason we're doing it here tonight in public is for full transparency. And actually, the legal representation says they've never seen it like this, but we're doing it for that reason. So the public can see what we're doing, where we're doing it, and we will provide the documents on our website or on the school building committee website, so that that's the reason we're doing this.
I think it's a great reason. I just was, we signed off on that. That's just really a very small document. I'd like to be able to look at this. That's all. I think this is great. I think it's great that the public gets to weigh in and listen. Not weigh in, but listen.
All right, go ahead.
Very good. Okay.
And in the interest of time, we're going to try to move through this a little quicker, if you could. Of course, if we have questions, we're going to stop you.
Yes. The one document that may take a little bit of time is the tax certificate, because that's the most complicated one. But I'm going to go through, and I'm probably going to, I'll just go do it the way I've been doing it and walk them up to you. So the next document is called the Significant Events Disclosure Certificate. It used to be the case that these official statements, the investors would get them, and then they would never get another piece of financial information from the municipality. And now we do have the Emma, MSRB access system. But the SEC has still been trying to bring municipal securities closer to what corporates do, and so they have this document where you've agreed that if any of these specified significant events happens while these notes are outstanding for the next 12 months, that you'll post something on that Emma website to alert investors. And these are things like principal and interest, payment delinquencies, rating changes, bankruptcy and solvency. If you enter into another financing, they want to know that. The next document is called the Tax Compliance Certificate. As I mentioned before, the feds really don't like tax-exempt securities, and so they make you jump through lots of hoops in order to issue tax-exempt obligations. So this is the document in which you're making your representations to the federal government regarding the issuance of the notes, the use of the proceeds of the notes, how the proceeds are going to be invested. If you earn too much arbitrage, you'll rebate it to the federal government. There are certain time targets for spending the money, et cetera. So all of that is in this document. And the last document is the actual bond anticipation note. You can see it's one note. It represents the whole $55 million. In the olden days, they would have individual note certificates printed up by a financial printer, but these days, they just have one jumbo note which gets signed up, and any investors in the notes will get a bank statement, basically, saying you own $X,000 worth of the South Kingstown bond anticipation notes, you know, bearing this interest rate. And it's on green security paper, like a great big check.
All right, thank you, Karen. Appreciate you walking us through that. Any remaining questions for council members while we have her? Go ahead.
So just a quick question. So we, we just signed off on the note. How quickly would those funds become available to the town for the project? Maybe you don't know that. Maybe because Brian's answering.
I believe it's Thursday or Friday. I got to look at that. It's, it's this week. It's Thursday or Friday.
Thursday.
Very quick.
Yes.
Great.
Yeah, well, we've been working on this for several months, but now everything's come together, and the money will be on, cash on the barrelhead on Thursday.
Awesome. Thank you.
Karen, Brian, thank you for walking us through this tonight.
Thank you. I'm sorry?
Thank you for walking us through this tonight.
Okay, very good. Thank you. And I'm, I am finished. And thank you all for your attention, and thank you for letting us be of service to the town.
All right, thank you.
Brian, can I just ask one quick question? If this is, if this is an impossible ask, just tell me. But I would really like to know how much money we're going to save because we got that 3%. If you could, like, just maybe figure out, because it's really as a result of our good credit and sound financial management and not taking extra money and, you know, that we have gotten this, so...
Karen pointed that out. I was, I was going to say, I'll have to get back to you and run the math, but that's, the premium amount does reflect if the rate was 4%. So say we were, we, the town received an interest rate of 4%, we would have been paying $510,000 more in interest. Instead, we're getting that upfront in premium, so...
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We're going to take about a five-minute recess before we begin at 7:30. All right, good evening, everyone. Welcome to Town Hall. We're gonna get things underway here. Today is Monday, June 23rd. It's a little after 7:30 PM. We're here for our regularly scheduled Town Council meeting. First order of business, as always, pledge of allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, next on the agenda is the land acknowledgement statement. The town of South Kingston pays homage to the indigenous people and land at which the town is now located. Let this acknowledgement serve as a reminder of our ongoing efforts to recognize, honor, reconcile, and partner with an indigenous tribe whose land and water we benefit from today. Next, we have the roll call.
Council President McIntyre.
Here.
Council Vice President Marin.
Here.
Council Member Bergner.
Here.
Council Member Ali.
Here.
Council Member Wedgemont.
Here.
All members are present.
Thank you. All right, that's gonna move us to item four, approval of minutes of previous meetings.
Motion to approve items four, A, B, and C.
Second.
All right, we got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Right, that passes. It's gonna bring us to item five, the consent agenda.
Motion to approve items five, A, B, and C.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that passes. It's now gonna bring us to item six, licenses. We're gonna take A and B together. A is a resolution granting a miscellaneous permit to conduct river fire on Thursday, August 21, 2025, from 5:00 PM to 9:00 PM to the Wakefield Village Association of Wakefield, subject to the execution of a hold harmless agreement indemnifying the town and receipt of a certificate of insurance, naming the town as an additional insured for the event in the amount specified by the finance director. And item B is a resolution granting a miscellaneous permit to conduct the river fire on Thursday, September 18, 2025, from 5:00 PM to 9:00 PM to the Wakefield Village Association of Wakefield, subject to the execution of a hold harmless agreement indemnifying the town and receipt of a certificate of insurance, naming the town as an additional insured for the event in the amount specified by the finance director. Application by Rebecca Cook. Welcome, all of you. Oh, can you please, yup, the button on the right.
Gotcha. Okay.
Great.
Yes, so I think we have to apply for the next river fire. And I didn't know if you wanted a little update on how our first river fire went?
Absolutely.
So it went very smoothly, even though we were all running around with like chickens with our heads cut off, but everything went great. We had a great band, we had over 20 vendors, we had, Birch and Barrel came out with a tent as some of the prob-
Bird's Day.
I said, Bird's Day. Sorry, Virgin Bang came out with a tent and just introduced themselves to the community with their food and they said it was great. We had another food truck as well and we had put everything else in the place that you had asked us to do. No incidents. It was a beautiful night, everything went off great. And we had a, we had an okay crown. We just have to figure out how to get more people drawn in there, but everybody seemed to really like having it over in the park. And we just wanna tweak it a little bit, so we're gonna have another meeting this week to try to figure out things that would make, draw more people in. I believe next month that we have Take It To The Bridge coming? Yeah, I think we have Take It To The Bridge is gonna be singing, so we're trying to bring in the bigger bands that will draw more people into the town.
Excellent. Any questions?
So your next one is July 17th? And that's Take It To The Bridge?
Yes.
And I maybe, I, did we already, we must have already done that license a few months ago? I can't remember, I was missing one meeting, so.
Yeah, so the last meeting you approved June and July, and this meeting is for approving August and September.
Okay, great.
Is my understanding.
All right, well, we look forward to the continued events. It's already a hot summer, so we expect more people to get out and be downtown and expect turnout to keep going up, so great stuff.
Very good.
Mr. President, motion to approve items six, A and B. Second.
All right, we got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Right, that passes. Good luck, see you down there.
Thank you so much.
All right, that's, we're now gonna move to the Town Manager's Report. For the interest of everyone, we're gonna move the entirety of the Town Manager's Report up, Jim. So we're gonna begin with A and then move B, C, D. Go ahead.
Yes, thank you. The first item we will discuss tonight is the bi-monthly update on the school building committee and school facilities project. So we have here tonight Kate Turner representing Left Field. And Kate, did you wanna start with this update?
Good evening, everyone. My name's Kate Turner with Left Field. Give me one moment, I'm gonna pull our presentation up on the screen. All right, so we have slightly more brief update tonight than we did at our last meeting where we were presenting our design development plans and estimates, requesting approval to submit our design development plans to RIDE. So we'll go through where we are on the schedule now, some of the important dates we have coming up, and then cover some of the important topics that have come up on the project. So as we see here on the red line, and we'll reflect later in our presentation, we are at the tail end of design development right now. We're currently in the RIDE review process for design development. Plans were submitted. We have been in constant contact with them. They're still reviewing them, they have not provided any feedback yet to date. But what we have also entered into is the bidding period for our enabling package and early site work packages. It includes structural, site, civil, and long lead time items. So those have all gone out to bid. Gilbane is currently bidding them. We're anticipating bid results to start rolling in on the temporary roadway work first, and then some of the earlier packages that we have for the remaining building as we cycle through the rest of this month and into early July. Skip through this slide, as we can see, design development, all our milestones to date have been hit that we've talked about. So where that leads us right now, leads us into the middle of July, as we've talked about that being a really key date for us in getting the temporary roadway work approved, some of the site enabling packages, the fencing in particular, relocation of the water line, and temporary electric coming to the site. Those are all pretty disruptive activities that we wanna make sure we get done before the first day of school. So we have targeted July 14th as the date to come in front of this council to present the bid results for those packages and request approval. That will be able, that is a very crucial date for us as it'll lead us to be able to mobilize as quickly as possible, get that work done at the tail end of July and through August. So while that work is happening, we are also receiving bids, opening bids, and negotiating pricing for the remaining package for the early site work that will happen into August and September, which is where we'll start excavating for our foundations and getting started with some of the early site work, site utilities and foundations for the actual high school itself, which is pretty exciting. That approval, we're looking to go in front of the building committee on August 7th. However, we currently are looking to schedule a Town Council meeting sometime in August or understand what the potential meeting in August would be. So we kind of targeted the 11th as a placeholder, but again, it is completely up to- We did talk about this.
That's a holiday, so we will meet the Tuesday?
Yes, well, it's, right now, we don't have anything scheduled, so that is up to you guys as to what your calendar is best. It can be the Tuesday, it can be the following week, it could be a little bit later since we're starting with that early package. We've got a little bit of breathing room there, but we do need to get that approved within the month of August.
Well, we typically only meet once in August unless we need to meet a second time at the end, so.
The 12th.
Where are we at with that?
Yeah, let's make sure we get everything you need done by the first meeting in August, which would be the Tuesday, the 12th.
Right.
The 12th.
Let's make sure we got everything we need approved at that meeting, such that we won't have a need for a second meeting, but if you do still have a need, you know, we can meet.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Yes, absolutely. We will look to have everything pulled together for you at that time. All right, touching a little bit about the RIDE process, as we mentioned, our package has been submitted to the Rhode Island Department of Education. We've requested weekly meetings, as they have not had a chance to thoroughly review the plan yet, they have not reached back out to schedule those meetings, but we are not, we will keep asking, make sure we get that in front of them. We are scheduled to meet with them on July 21st to review those early bid package results that we received for some of the site enabling work and some of the contractual terms for our construction contract or our GMP. And then again in August for the remaining packages.
Can we go ahead and agree to the, sign off on the bids in early July if we haven't heard from RIDE, or do you anticipate hearing from RIDE before July 14th?
So we've made them, we've made them well aware of the aggressive schedule, so they do request design development approval prior to us proceeding with the work. We're doing this on a parallel path. They are very well aware of the importance of that July 14th date for us. All right, so we've kept some of these important discussion points, we've touched on most of them. The site enabling work, again, being very crucial. We've recently met with Rhode Island Energy out on site to look at where the poles are going to be located, how many poles, you know, a little bit more technical information to really coordinate the power and the water that are both going to be part of this early package as we reroute the road. Both of those things need to be moved out of the way so that we can pour our foundations, excavate for our foundations, and not disrupt the school. So Rhode Island Energy is a pretty key component within our site enabling package, so we have continued to engage them. Studio Jade is having weekly conversations to ensure that they are progressing on the same timeline that we are, because we are reliant on them for that primary power from the street onto the site. So they are, so far, extremely responsive. We'll let you know if we need any other assistance, but at this point, we feel pretty comfortable that they'll be able to meet our timelines as well. Again, impacts on tariffs. We'll have a better understanding of this once we start to get bids in for structural steel in particular, which is the most impactful as part of our early bid package. We did just see some switchgear results come in from another project that were very good. That's one of our pieces of equipment that we'll be bidding out early as part of this. So the market is still trending in a positive direction, we're still feeling pretty comfortable. No red flags as of now, but again, we'll continue to update you as more information becomes available. And the additional environmental study, we did just hear back from the drill rig to get the additional boreings done at the high school. They are looking to do some ground penetrating radar into late this week and starting into next week. So we'll be finalizing those dates with CHIP to ensure that there is no disruption to the flow of traffic around the site. So a pretty brief update tonight, but I'm happy to open it up to questions.
Go ahead.
Thank you. So a number of residents have asked, and I don't think Luke Murray is here tonight, he kind of handled and was working on the land swap application with the department, with the Federal Department of the Interior or Parks, one of those. Do you know where that stands? Would you know?
I do not, unfortunately.
Because as we move forward in the next couple of weeks and things start to be anchored in the ground, in the new site, we're gonna hear from the community, have you gotten approval that this land swap is good to go? It's not that I don't think it's good to go, people just like to have all the I's and T's dotted and crossed.
Absolutely. I will check in with Luke Murray when he returns and we'll make sure.
Oh, is he out, is he out this week?
Yes, he's away on vacation with his family, so, but what I will say, there's no indication that it won't go that way. Everything's going as planned, and I think he did brief the council recently in the past couple of meetings. So there's, nothing's really changed from when that last briefing was.
But we don't submit that application ahead of time, right? We wait until the project is done? Or do we?
I don't have the exact answer to that.
I know the process is underway, I don't wanna speak for Luke or give any misinformation, but I do know the process is underway, and we're not looking to start excavating in that area until the beginning of September.
Okay, good to know.
So the work, the work that we're doing as part of this early package, the temporary roadway, is on the high school site.
Great. We can get an update whenever he comes back.
Yes.
One of the things that Luke had mentioned was trying to time the exact application, because once you get the approval, you only have 36 months to do it. And we're in the middle of construction during that time, and we're not gonna be able to demolish the school anyway for a certain period of time. So it was a tricky sense of timing, but he had also talked to the representative for the Department of Interior in the state, and he didn't think that there was gonna be an issue with it.
I don't have anything specific to add, but in my experience, if any issues are identified by DEM with respect to a potential land swap, they'll tell the municipality about it right at the outset.
There have been no areas of concern to date, that I know.
Great.
All right. Thank you, Kate. Oh, Mike, go ahead.
I did have one more question on the follow-up environmental. That's gonna be completed before the start of school as well?
Absolutely, yes. It's one day worth of drilling and they're looking sometime next week to do it, so we'll have plenty of notice.
Long as there's no equipment, first day of school.
Nope.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Kate.
We will, we will get to the hydrolog one in a few moments, but the next one, item on the Town Manager's Report, the update on paving and sealing of town roads. We get many questions, daily, weekly, about, you know, when is this road due, what schedule is it, why are we, why are we doing crack sealing, why are we doing pavement, it's that, there's a lot of questions. And, you know, we went to the, I went to the source who handles all this, Rich Berman, the Director of Public Services, and he'll just give a brief update and answer any questions you might have.
So, Rich Berman, the Director of Public Services, so we, we have generally two processes when it comes to pavement. One is our actual reconstruction, road reconstruction, that's where we repave roads. We have a couple different processes within that, but the other part of our pavement management is our pavement preservation. And within pavement preservation, we have two things that we do. One is stone seal, and the other is crack seal. And normally, we'll crack seal a road before we even stone seal it, so often, there's a lot of overlap, but then we are crack sealing a lot of roads that aren't even gonna get stone sealed for a while. And generally, how it works is, you know, we have about $700,000 that we put towards paving each year, and we have 270 to 80 that we put towards stone seal and crack seal each year. We try to bulk up the crack seal, the crack seal and stone seal contract to a two-year. So what we do is we straddle the fiscal year. So we do, you know, the first and the second year, both in that same summer, because we get better pricing. So we generally spend almost $500,000, you know, just in that, that, that one season, but it's every two years. So where we put out our roads for stone seal, as you know, and crack seal, it was in the paper, it was all of that. It is gonna get put off another month, the quarry that's supplying the stone is not able to supply it right away, so we're gonna, we're gonna put it off another month. So we're actually gonna have to re-advertise, we're gonna put it all back out there again, but it's gonna happen in another month. So some of the questions I've gotten, and so, again, I provide you, I provide you a memo, it's got a lot of questions and answers and that type of stuff, and this is resurrected from a previous memo, but it's been updated. Generally, crack seal is a, you know, and you've all seen it, I'm sure, it's a coat of oil and then stone. And what it does is it fills all the little voids, it keeps water from getting in there, breaking apart the road. The reason why we crack seal as part of our pavement preservation is that we can crack seal a road five to 10 times before we'll ever have to repave it, and that could be over a period of 50 or 60 years. to repave it. And that could be over a period of 50 or 60 years. And that's generally what we're, what was what we're trying to get to. Now, that's not saying every road is not going to fall apart if we crack, if we stone seal and crack seal. That's just not the case. It depends on a lot of things. It depends on how the asphalt went down originally. It depends on how, what kind of use you're getting out of it. The corners are always tougher. There's a lot of things that make it more difficult. So, you know, it's just that, it's a, it's a really a cost management. So if we crack seal that road, that may, in today's dollars, and, you know, it was half this just about eight years ago, but it's, but it costs about $30,000 to crack seal and stone seal a mile of road. Whereas that same mile of road is going to cost about $700,000 or more to repave it. So if we repave that road two times over 50 years, we've spent, you know, one and a half million dollars. Whereas we could have crack sealed it through those, those 50 years and maybe five or six times and we would have spent far less money. So we may still end up having to repave that road, but I'm just saying that along through the management of that road, we would spend a lot less money. I know crack seal is, stone seal is, I keep saying, crack seal, but it's stone seal is, is the, is the most contested part of our process. Every year I get all the emails and it, it's, and it's, you know, how do we opt out, all those things. Well, it's not. It's part of our management plan. If, if we start letting these roads opt out, then we are eventually going to have to go in and repave that road. It could be even 20 years. The disruption in that is going to be far greater than us to stone seal it. But I sympathize. It is not an easy surface initially. And, you know, I've, I've lived on a road that gets stone sealed and I, it's uncomfortable. I get it. But, you know, it's a long-term management process. It's budgetary focused and, you know, it's better, you know, for the management of our roads if we continue this process and we do this process and we do it on a regular basis. One more thing? I'm sorry. The, we generally try to stone seal once every 10 to 15 years and we can expect to pave a road once every 25 years if we don't stone seal. I'm sorry.
So I don't know if anyone else got a question from the community about the stone sealing and the crack sealing. So I asked Jim about it because they, the people that contacted me feel that there are other roads that are in much worse condition that they want to make sure that they're under your attention. So it's not that the process is illogical. They're saying Shanick Road, Gravely Hill Road and Tucker Town Road were the three that they named to me, that they were curious. You're stone sealing and crack sealing over here, but what's the plan for those roads? So when I asked Jim that, we got you to come to the meeting.
Yeah, and that's great. But, you know, in the defense of all the calls you might have gotten, you know, the, this is every single season we do this.
No, I know.
We get 50 calls. So it's okay. I mean, this is what we do and I don't mind explaining to every single person that calls. We are, we are doing Shanick Road because it was paved in, was it 2010, maybe 2013, somewhere around there. So it's ready for stone seal. This is the time you do it. Gravely Hill is planned for repaving in a year. So we're not going to stone seal that. And then Tucker Town, I haven't heard Tucker Town, but Tucker Town was only paved in recent years and we actually repaved a section. We will be stone sealing that over the next couple of years, couple of seasons.
Okay, so.
Tucker Town.
So Shanick Road will be what? We, stone sealed?
It's going to be stone sealed this, this, that was a big question.
This summer?
This year, yes.
Okay. And so then, and then just to follow up, so the stone sealing and crack sealing that was supposed to be June 18th to July 18th is pushed out a whole month?
A month. So we're, we're expecting towards the end of July now.
Fair. Will homeowners get another letter?
We, we talked today about sending out additional door hangers.
Okay.
And we're going to, we're going to put it in the paper again.
Okay.
And then we're going to also put it on Facebook and all of that as well. So we'll do all the, the normal processes we use to.
Because I read the letter and it, I don't know if it, does anybody get the letter? Okay, so the letter says, one thing, it says, don't water the day before, the day after, but they don't tell you when they're coming. So I wonder how people would manage that.
So I, you're right.
Just curious.
And I got a call from a gentleman. He was down on Plains Road. We're going to be doing Plains Road. And what I explained, and I'll tell, I'll tell everybody, I mean, the problem isn't, you can water. It's just that a lot of these sprinkler systems end to spray in the road.
Right.
So it, I, I think it's, it's not necessarily a big concern.
Okay.
So I'm not worried about it. If it were, we would have been more, you know, a little bit more than, than what we did. If somebody calls me and say, that's what I'm, if somebody calls and asks that questions, I'm going to say just that. Don't worry about it.
Okay.
But we will try to be more, a little bit more.
Targeted?
On the dates when we're going to start. Okay?
Because that was the other, the, the other piece of the letter. It says, don't park in the road. And how would you know if, if you don't have, you know, that 30 days is a big window and people could have somebody spend the night or a couple of people. So you have no idea. So I just was asking.
That's understood. And also, we've done this for a lot of years and we're, we're perfectly in tune to, you know, we'll go knock on doors. We ask people to move cars. The, the crews are generally very flexible. You know, this road's not going to work right now. We'll go over here. It, it always works out.
Okay, I just don't.
I'm not too worried.
I just don't recall a letter like that. So when somebody showed me the letter and I read the details, I was, you know, that was new. Have we always sent out a letter?
Uh, yeah, yeah. We've, we've always done door hangers and things like that. Yeah. The letter I'm going to assume was a door hanger. It was put in people's doors. We go, we go door to door and put them in the doors. We've always done that for stone seal.
Okay.
So.
I feel like it was mailed, but maybe I was wrong.
So these roads, and I'll, I'll add that the stone, again, it's uncomfortable. I get it. And, and I can really appreciate it. The, the, the stone seal generally smooths out over.
Oh, yeah.
A few years. It should be a year. The problem is, we're not plowing as much. And so that usually takes the edge off pretty well. So, you know, my street was stone sealed two years ago. It's still, you know.
Rough. Yeah.
A little bit rough.
I don't think that the people that I've spoken to have a concern about the stone sealing per se. They mostly identify other roads and since they're not getting the notice that Shanick or Gravely, because they don't live on Shanick or Gravely, they're concerned for their community members. That's all.
Yeah, okay.
So appreciate the update on that.
Yeah. And I, and I would, I would tell anybody that has any concerns, just call and we'll, we'll fill you in.
Yeah.
And, but, but we'll try to be a little more targeted on the time and the, and the date when they're going to start.
Thank you very much.
Rich, can you, Rich, Rich over here. Yep. So could you please just give a brief update on the roadway in front of the Peace Dale Library? Because that's the area that we normally get most calls.
Yeah, so, you know, so we've talked about this road a number of times. So we did walk it a while back and, you know, they were going to patch, a patch, but in an aggressive way. They were going to do lanes and things like that. But what they opted to do was to put it out in the 25, 26 DOT, when I say they, DOT, put it out in the 25, 26 pavement contract. So that pavement contract is statewide and that pavement crew could be anywhere. I believe that it might have been, it might have been awarded to Lynch perhaps. I'm not, I'm not sure who it was awarded to, but that would, they're expecting that they're going to do that section of road. Also, in and around where the bike path is near Kersey, where it crosses 108 there, they're going to do that section over there. And it's going to, but not the, where the, where the utility work was done, that'll be done by Rhode Island Energy. But there is a section that had no utility work that needs to get done. State's going to take care of that and we're, we're looking at August. So they said they were going to move it up front of the process, August.
And how long does that take, Rich? Begin in August? How long can we anticipate before, citizens driving on that road feel better about it?
You know, if they're moving like our paving contract, I know it may seem like clumsy to see our paving crews out there, but they're actually moving pretty quick. I would imagine they're going to move quick. These aren't, this, well, this contract's going to go even into the springtime, not for us, but for other places in the state. So, but I'd imagine they're going to move pretty quick. I would expect that, that section of road, a few weeks.
All right.
I'd like to think they, they're looking at URI coming back, you know, and they're going to be cautious of that.
Yeah.
And, and a little update, another update, bringing up URI. So 138, they're redoing the patch now. They're, they're cutting out a larger section. They're putting in a 10-inch asphalt patch. That's the permanent patch. And they're going to repave that July 13th. They're coming in and they're going to repave that road. That should only take a week and that'll be nighttime paving. And that'll be done, done. That's, that's the sewer project would be done at that point.
All right.
Okay.
So how about the roads around Main Street? Like where he leases?
So that's been, that, now that received the finish course, this, on Friday, I believe, was Robinson.
Oh, good.
Saw Pond was paved, I believe, today. So all of our paving is done. We have to stripe, but the paving, paving is all done. I am, I'm still looking at perhaps heading up to Old North Road and doing it and trying to figure out how we get that done. And Lynch is willing to, they're putting together costs for that now.
Thank you.
I'll be back here for, I'll be back here for a contract amendment on that.
All right. Thank you, Rich.
All right. Thank you.
The next item will be the South Kingston Police Department accreditation. So to give you a little background on that, Chief Moynihan's here will go over the, he'll go over the process that occurred. And, but, South Kingston PD lost the accreditation in March of '24. They worked very hard over the past year. I'm pleased to say that we, we, we came out bigger and stronger on this and the department's better for the way it was handled this way and that I'm, I was confident they would get it. Never doubt my mind, but I'm, I'm very pleased with the way it turned out. So I'll let Chief Moynihan explain that.
Yes, good evening. So we're, we're very pleased to, to be notified of the accreditation. And this was a year-long process since losing it last year. December, we had our market assessment. It went very well. And then the assessment team came in at the beginning of March. It, it took them quite a long time to do it, I think, by going through everything, just making sure. They do really do a deep dive into all of our policies, our procedures. And it's not just about, I know I came in front of you on, on several of the stand-in orders that we needed to change, but it's, it's not just having the policies in place. It's ensuring that the officers and the department is following through with all of that. So it's ensuring that we have proofs to support those policies. So very proud of, of all the women and men of the department. Did an outstanding job in, as the manager stated, we're a better department for it and we're on a better road going forward.
All right. Excellent work, Chief.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Chief.
Thank you.
And thank you. I know I was pestering you and Jim most of the year, but thank you for doing a good job and changing the culture.
And just to add also that, that year, it took a year, you know, in order to see the proofs developed. You know, it's not something that we can just change policies and say, okay, we're going to follow these standards moving forward. You have to show that, that we are actually doing it. And, you know, really to go back in time, what's happened in the, in the past, excuse me, is the past. But I think the biggest thing that we can look at is the documentation. It wasn't that the department wasn't following through with, with best practice in policing. We have an outstanding police department. I've said that since day one of taking the job. It's just that things weren't being documented so the proofs weren't there to support it. And I think that's probably one of the biggest takeaways from this process over the last year is, is not only have real definitive policies and procedures in place, but ensure that there's documentation to support the work being done.
Thank you.
All right, Chief. Nice work.
Thank you.
The last item is an update on the hydrilla treatment update for Wardens Pond. We have Conservation Officer Mike Stack here to go over that. Thank you. Mike?
Good evening. So the agenda lists hydrilla treatment update for Wardens Pond. That's pretty brief. There is no update for hydrilla treatment at Wardens Pond. Happy to discuss the hydrilla treatment as a whole that we're working on across the town. We have some other things going on at Indian Lake. And we do have some things that have happened at Wardens Pond, but as to actual treatment, like we're seeing at Indian Lake last year, there's nothing that the state has moved on with that. It's largely a funding issue, I believe, at this point. So.
Can we, can we start with Wardens Pond? Can we start with Wardens? I know we got the boat washing station. How's that working? Obviously, it's hot out. People are getting the boat in. Are they using it? What's going on?
So there was a algal bloom at Wardens Pond, which has curbed the usage based on DOH and DEM recommendations. They're avoiding, they're advising to avoid contact with the water. So there is still some activity there. There have been some boats out. The boat cleaning station has been used, is being used. We have it linked up now with software where I can go in and see how many times each tool has been used, if there's any problems. So there is activity. I can see that there's activity, but it is limited because I think a lot of people are heeding the advisement to not be utilizing the water.
Could you explain exactly, because I keep seeing warnings to avoid contact. Could you explain that to us?
Can I, can you just, I'm going to Google whatever you said, the algae thing. I didn't hear it clearly. That's all.
Sure. So I may butcher the name. It's, it's a cyanobacterial bloom, I believe, is, what it's called and how it's pronounced. And on the 6th of June, the Department of Health and DEM issued an advisory, advising people to avoid contact with the water. It's a blue-green algae and it can be toxic. So they don't want people getting on their skin, coming into contact with fish in the pond, dogs swimming in it, things of that, drinking it, things of that nature.
Is this from the heat, Mike? Or?
So in Rhode Island, we do see this in ponds, usually annually somewhere in the state, and it usually is later in the summer brought on. I'm not an expert on this, but I believe it is brought on by the warmer water temperatures. It's a little bit of an anomaly this year because we really, until now, haven't had much heat. It's been kind of a cool, cloudy, rainy start to the summer. Again, I'm not the expert on, on why there was that bloom. It's pretty readily apparent, is my understanding. Almost looks like a paint sheen on the water when you can see it. So it's not, it's, when you go down there and look, you don't necessarily see it. And they, they didn't disclose to the public where it was located. It was reported. They've done testing. They've confirmed that that is in fact in the pond. And as of now, I haven't seen any information that has been, that has been lifted.
Is there a way to treat it? Or is it just kind of dissipate on its own?
I don't believe so. I believe it's naturally occurring and it will dissipate. I don't know how it dissipates or how long that takes. I also don't know the frequency of the testing. And there's a relationship there where DEM is advising it and DOH is advising it, but generally water quality is a DOH thing. So I, I think it may be under their purview ultimately to, to issue that.
There was, there's a joint advisory from DOH and DEM that's on our website. It's a banner across the top for anyone who's interested.
That is correct. Yep.
All right, let's, let's maybe move over to Indian Lake for a second here.
Sure. So just one last thing on Wardens Pond. We did get from the Wood, if you remember, we got from the Wood Pawtucket Wild and Scenic Rivers Coalition, a small grant to install a kiosk with information about the boat cleaning station and how to use it, why to use it, and also invasive species, more specifically hydrilla. It looks like we're going to be able to build that in-house with the facilities department. They're working on putting all that together now. So that's moving forward. So that's another project over at Wardens Pond to help get information out to the public and educate everybody on what's going on over there.
Excellent.
So at, at Indian Lake, if you recall, we received, there was a, a grant from DEM for $155,000 to do two years of additional treatment at Indian Lake. DEM did one treatment last, one round of treatments last year. Six treatments over the course of last season. So we're picking up with that grant and, and matching funds from the town the next two years. So on the 10th, the same company, the Pond and Lake Connection, who did the work last year, they were also who the project was awarded to this year. And they did their pre-treatment survey where they kind of map the, the lake and see where the hydrilla is and, and kind of figure out how they're going to address it. And also it gives them a start point and an endpoint. They'll do it again at the end to see. So that was, that was conducted. And then they just, this week on the 16th, did their first treatment. As part of that, they notify all of the property owners in the area. They posted the public ramp. They posted the clubhouse, at the Village of Indian Lake, any other access points to the lake, that that is. um, to the lake that that is occurring, uh, and then the application is done with an airboat. We don't see a lot of airboats around here, those are the boats with the big fans on the back, you see like down in the Everglades. Um, and so they moved through and they, they kind of, uh, let it, uh, you know, trickle out of the back of the, out of the airboat, the treatment. Uh, they advise that, um, swimming, fishing, boating, um, is all acceptable, uh, post-treatment, uh, and that there's no harmful, uh, effects according to the company and according to DEM. Um, but they would like people to stay out of their way, obviously, while they're, while they're doing the treatment.
All right.
Um, and I believe they're gonna be installing a boat cleaning station soon, um, because the company that we bought ours from for Wardens Pond CD3 said that they had just, um, processed that order to, to be delivered. So, I think that we're gonna see that at Indian Lake shortly.
And I know, uh, you know, previous times, we've talked about this, we've talked about this, it's sort of like a long-term type of remediation, for lack of a better word, effort here to clean up the Indian Lake. Now, what, we at least know that there's another year or another two years, there's gonna be efforts to clean it? Beyond that, there just hasn't been money allocated from the state yet? Is that where we're at?
That's correct. So, yeah, there's not money currently allocated for future projects. We have, um, next year, so, we have the twenty-four, twenty-five calendar year and twenty-six calendar year at Indian Lake are covered. So, there'll be treatments, there'll be six treatments in each of those years. Um, it's my understanding that they recommend five-year treatment, um, and DEM, I believe, is looking at, uh, some various funding sources to try and fund that, one of them being the SNEP grant, um, and seeing if they can put some money together with that. That's in the very early stages to look at subsequent years, um, beyond what we're treating. Um, so it seems like Indian Lake is pretty dialed in based on what the experts recommend that is done over there, uh, and we have a plan there, and we're working to complete that plan. Wardens Pond, we, it, it's such a monumental undertaking, I mean, the last, that one survey that they did, uh, I think it was last year, there was over two hundred acres that it was located in, and there's a thousand plus acres that, of that pond, so that's a good portion. A lot of it is concentrated around the boat ramp, um, there's some at the, at the exit of the Chapuxet, and then also some at the headwaters of the Wood Pawtucket, uh, or, I'm sorry, at the Pawtucket, and Wood Pawtucket Wild and Scenic and some of the other partners, we're really working with a lot of those nonprofits and those environmental groups to try and put together some kind of, um, organized group to, to address that and look for funding. Uh, the National Park Service is involved, because of that Wild and Scenic designation, we can, we can, um, work with them as well, so they've been in some of the meetings. So, we are doing work to try and address it, but, um, there's no concrete plan as of yet.
Mike, do you know if the pre-treatment survey gives us any data about the effectiveness of last year's treatment?
I believe it will, I don't have that yet, um, but I believe that, that will show. The, the thing is, is, my understanding is it does go somewhat dormant, so the treatment actually, they don't wanna treat earlier in the year, um, like, you know, people think, okay, spring, when's the treatment coming? And, so I had to tell some people, it, it's not time yet, right? The beginning of June is when they started it. Um, so it, it, they want it to start growing so that they can, that they can attack the actual, um, plant itself.
And Mike, am I correct that Wardens Pond is the largest inland body of water in the state?
I think you are correct, it, yeah, that sounds familiar, yep.
So, I, I actually Googled that, Rory. So, it is the, a natural lake, the second largest in the state, but the largest natural lake in the, in the state of Rhode Island, so it's the largest, the largest is Situate Reservoir, which is not actually a natural lake, and then Watchogue, Flat River, and then Beach Pond. So, good job.
Huge, uh, sport fish pond, too. It's, there's a lot of, um, freshwater fishing in that, in that pond, so it's, it's a huge asset to the town and the state.
Okay, any other questions for Mike on this?
Not on this. Could, could I ask you when you're coming back about the kayaks, cause, and the kayak racks over in Matunik? And where, where you're at? When do you anticipate coming back for either the free structure or how people can get a sticker?
So, I have fielded some, is it, okay to answer that? I have fielded some phone calls on that, we are working on that. Um, I put together a PO to order, um, the stickers for the permit. Um, we do, you are correct, we do need to establish a fee structure. Um, I'm open to suggestions, recommendations, if you would like the Waterfront Advisory Commission to, um, come back with a concrete number that they recommend. I know that was kinda batted around during that public hearing, uh, between you folks and, and Nate, so, um, wha, whatever you folks would like to see, I'm, I'm happy to, to do that, and, um, I believe that's part of the budget, you know, the final budget adoption of your fee structure.
So, we meet July seventh, no, fourteenth? Fourteenth. Do you think you could come back by then? Because there's only three meetings before the end of summer for Town Council after that.
So, the Waterfront Commission's scheduled to meet July third.
Okay.
It's July third. I, I haven't heard that we won't have a quorum, but, um, it is July third. Um, but certainly, we could reschedule, uh, at a subsequent week. If they can't make July third work, we could probably, you know, I would double check with, with, uh, legal counsel, but I think we could reschedule that, um, to a, a later date, um, if there's a time pressing matter that they need to address. There are some other things on the agenda that also have a, a time clock, um, that they need to address, so regardless, they're gonna have to look at that, or we're gonna have to seek an extension, so, uh, I'm certainly happy to, to have them look at that and provide you folks with a recommendation, if that's what you're looking for.
Because to do a fee structure change or establish it, that's not a public hearing, correct? Correct. So, that's just, could be a, a Town Council business item. Oh, okay.
And Mike, oh, sorry, go ahead.
When do you expect to have the units themselves constructed, in place?
Next year, I think.
For the kayak racks, the actual racks themselves. Um, so, per, uh, I believe it was, uh, Patty's recommendation to talk to the CTE program for carpentry at the high school, I, or, or maybe that was you, Dev, I'm sorry. Um, um, my apologies. The, uh, I did reach out to them, and we met on site, um, and looked at that. Obviously, they're on break right now, um, but they seem interested in, um, in doing that project. Um, I think that they said they, they mark up the supplies fifteen percent to fund the program, um, so we would supply the lumber and supplies and all that stuff if we wanted to go that route. Um, so, in the interim, I think we had talked about maybe just getting some timbers, um, to put down and, and determining, um, you know, a, a conservative carrying capacity, short of having actual racks, um, where we could, we could allow that. So, I think it's the permitting, or the permits, rather, the, the stickers that we need, and then the fee structure, and then we could advertise to the public, you know, to, to be able to register, um.
The reason I was asking was just if, until we have something for people to store the kayaks in, it's not that urgent for us to have the fee structure and the stickers.
I would agree with you, um, I guess it's, do you wanna allow it absent the rack so that people can utilize it this year? Or do we wanna just wait until the entire system is ready to be implemented? I, I have fielded some phone calls, I, I'm amenable to either, I mean, it's, it's certainly easier to push it out, but also, I understand the desire to wanna be down there and utilizing it, uh, as they historically were.
So, the advantage to having the stickers is at least you'd know whose red kayak was there, instead of the twenty-five random boats that he's dispersing, so. I kinda feel like if we could do the stickers and interim, even though it's a little bit wonky, at least we wouldn't have twenty-five boats in September that you're like, who are these people's boats?
Counselors, I would love to talk about this, but it's, you know, we're here to talk about the hydrilla, and so I, I think that if we wanna talk about it at the next meeting, I would love to talk about what we should be doing, but I think we should stick to the.
So, we're just finishing up.
I say life is short, let them use the area.
I think you got the gist, and we're not gonna go too much longer with this. We'd like to see this operative, if that's practical, this summer.
Yep.
Absent racks, and if you could put some sort of temporary structure, great. Uh, we'd like to allow this to be utilized, get moving, at least get the, uh, the mark stamps, whatever it's referred to in the ordinance, you know? Otherwise, people have moorings, can't get to the moorings, people trying to utilize kayaks down there, whatever they do, it's gonna be tough to do that if we don't have, you know, make moves on that whilst, you know, it's hot, summer, they wanna get on the water.
Understood. We, uh, the PO is in process for the stickers, so those are inbound, uh, shortly, and, um, I'll request with the Waterfront Commission, uh, make our fee structure recommendation to you folks.
Awesome.
And if there's anything else you want them to come back with, uh, I'm happy to do that as well.
All right, thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Mike.
Uh, Council President, the last thing is, uh, just an announcement that the meeting, I was, uh, two meetings ago, I announced that we, to you all, that we were gonna have a meeting with the, uh, Housing Secretary tomorrow on the twenty-fourth of June. I was notified today late that, uh, the meeting had to be rescheduled, they had a major conflict to either July seventeenth or July twenty-first, so, we didn't forget about the meeting, we just, we have to push it out a couple of few weeks.
All right, thank you, Jim.
Okay.
I just have a question for Jim, if you don't mind. So, Jim, a number of people reached out to me with questions about this agenda.
Yes.
So, were there some changes made to the order?
Yes.
Okay, could you speak to that?
Sure. Um, you're probably specifically talking about the public comment section, all right. So, that was a decision that I made, uh, so the agenda does, the composition of the agenda does fall under me on how to expedite things and move things along. If you've seen, I've been here three years, we've moved it many different ways, many different directions, um, and, and I greatly respect the public comment section of this agenda. Past several meetings, we've had many challenges in getting to all the items on this agenda, some extremely important, some that we had to take up, new business items at five of eleven, where we had ten minutes, fifteen minutes to make major decisions, the council had to make major decisions on big money items. So, this agenda here, we, we're trying to go back to the other way, where we expedite Town Manager's Report, new business, keep the, keep the agenda moving, so that, under public comment, that I, I, I think there would even be more time to have a spirited discussion in this chamber, but we need to get the, the business done, the town business that is extremely important, as, as important as the public comment.
Mm-hmm.
The example was, two weeks ago, we went very late with the meeting, and we missed four major items, stuff that the staff in the town has been chomping at the bit to get over the finish line. One of them was affordable housing and, uh, RFPs for things. And no fault to anyone, it's just that it didn't get done, and we had to have a special meeting last week to do it, and that's no problem either. But, we wanna move all these initiatives, as a whole, part to the town forward, so let's just try this, see how it goes, but tonight's meeting, I want, I wanna get as much done as we can, so we can keep putting all the stuff on the agenda and not having to make decisions at five past eleven or ten past eleven. That was the reason, yes.
Thank you for explaining that. Something to think about for the, the rest of you, um, I know there's a lot of pushback anytime there's a special meeting, but I would ask that you think this, about this suggestion, it's just a suggestion, maybe we would revise it a little bit, but the five goals that we have established are pretty meaty, complicated, they, they warrant good discussion, they warrant us to have the right amount of time, and that perhaps when those come up, those are the times that we might consider having a special meeting, so, we already have the high school already tucked in the, into our weekly agenda, so it's the other four. So, when we talk about the homestead exemption, rather than doing it as an add-on into something, maybe we consider that in the future that we have a special one-hour meeting, cause we end up spending a good amount of time discussing it and trying to figure it out. I thought last week's meeting on affordable housing was very helpful and very encouraging, much like over the summer when we did the affordable housing meeting with, with Jamie, that was really helpful. To think about, maybe those are the times where we would just have a special meeting, so, that tends to take up a lot of time in the actual business part of the meeting, and since those are our goals and objectives, we might wanna be willing to spend a special time. You don't have to weigh in on it, I just put it out there, because there's very limited ways that I can communicate any ideas or thoughts, so, I just want you to, maybe you have a better way to improve it, but those are the things that really take up our time, and I would wanna, I don't wanna rush those, because those are, we spent a lot of time even establishing those. So, affordable housing, the land use, the homestead exemption, and the Tower Hill Road, correct?
Yeah, yeah, no, I'm with you.
We don't have to talk about it?
I'll just say, I'll just say a statement, sort of in response to it. I think, uh, you know, we should be conscious, you know, of certain items that will require a lot of time and attention. Uh, you know, as an example, I think it was two weeks ago, we had a joint session with the school committee, um, that easily could have been its own standalone session, I mean, it had, in retrospect, and we could see, it was a two-hour-long se, segment in itself, um, you know, but sometimes, just because it is the topic of housing or, or schools doesn't necessitate, you know, a special meeting, because we can get through it rather quickly. I think we just need to be conscious of, uh, you know, what's to be on an agenda, how much time it really takes, if it's gonna be, uh, something, uh, deliberating as to, you know, different potential metrics that could work for a homestead, obviously, we need a standalone work session. Can't fit into just a meeting agenda, cause it requires a lot of time deliberation, conversation, but, uh, I'm with you, we just need to sort of be more mindful of it, um, and not just try to jam everything in an agenda such that we're here, you know, too long to the point where, you know, we can't think clearly to vote on critical items. So, I'm with you, something to just think about.
Right, but it also, it highlights that, it's, it does two things, it helps us focus our work on that one topic, but it also allows the community to know when to pay attention, to tune in, to go, oh, on Monday, this extra meeting is, is about the homestead exemption. We know there's a lot of engagement on that, we know there's a lot of interest at this table and in the audience and in the community. I just, think about that is also very helpful to the community to know when it's gonna happen and tune in and show up. So, we don't have to, I don't, it doesn't matter if it happens or not, I just, I feel like there's ways to improve the le, the, the leading of the meetings and the agendas are not going so well, and I'm just in my head trying to figure out what we could do to make it better, and that, those are the ones that I think, quite honestly, there's good collaboration when we talk about affordable housing, there's good collaboration when we talk about the homestead exemption, and those would be, and they require conversation, so, it's just something, we don't set the agenda, but if we told Jim, we would wanna consider that, then we would, then he would then, uh, he, he's only doing what he's directed to do by the five of us, so if he's being told by someone, don't have special meetings, it's an issue. So, I'm just saying, let's maybe think about for those topics.
Got it. Okay, we're now gonna move on to the public hearing, item eight, a public hearing relative to adoption of the fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six position allocation and pay schedule as shown in Exhibit One attached here, two. Jim, I'm gonna go, go to you here for a little intro, go ahead.
Yes, yes, thank you. I'll give a, a very brief, uh, executive summary to the council on what this is about, this is required, uh, every year, and that I've been here, we've done it every single year, same, same timeframe. Um, this public hearing is, uh, once again, is regarding the twenty-twenty-five pay schedule and allocation of pay, and I'll just say a few words on the staff and how this relates to that. So, the strengths of this town, one of the big strengths of this town is obviously the fiscal responsibility that we have, all of us, towards, uh, running our budget, but it's also the excellent workforce we have. I'm not saying that lightly, this is an excellent workforce, I'm very impressed. Many people are local, they take a lot of pride in, uh, in, uh, paying attention to our taxpayers and our residents, and I'm very impressed by them. Recruitment and retention of these employees is a priority. If we, we are known as a good, not only as a good workforce, but they're very fair. The town is very fair to the employees and to the residents, and I'll repeat that again. Although we have very good employees that deserve to be compensated fairly, we have to be fair to the taxpayers. Fair to the taxpayers, but fair to the employees, there has to be a balance, and I feel we do have a good balance. What you've, uh, the Town Council has presented by Brian Sylvia in, in the budget, was a three percent increase, uh, a cost of living increase for the employees of this town, non-union employees, for recruitment and retention, and, uh, that is what we will be presenting tonight. Luke Murray, who's the Director of Administrative Services, as well as the Deputy Town Manager, um, is, is not here this week. In his place is Amy Campbell, who's the Human Resource Manager, who, uh, is one of the behind-the-scenes players that really has one, probably one of the toughest jobs that I've seen, uh, uh, in any complex organization. So, she's here tonight to do a very brief summary of what, what this is, how it affects the employees, and, um, and Amy, I'll turn it over to you now to do that summary.
Good evening. Um, so as Jim said, I'll start the presentation. So, um, the first por, portion, this public hearing, um, cha, you guys are going to be presented with the changes to the non-union position and pay allocation schedule and benefit schedules, because they're reviewed annually. Um, Section thirteen dash thirty-one B of the Town Code of Ordinances prescribes that the town man- annually. Section 13-31B of the Town Code of Ordinances prescribes that the town manager submits revisions to the pay plan and rules for the plans administration for the town council for adoption or amendment. All changes proposed in the fiscal year 2526 non-union pay plan are included and are funded within the 2526 adopted municipal budget program. This next slide, I believe, is the exhibit one attached within the agenda. So you'll see on the left is the pay schedule. The items that are highlighted all be going over on the next slides. And then over on the right is representative of a 3% increase of the current schedule. The top section within red reflects non-union pay plans for grades one through 10, which are overtime or comp eligible, and 11 through 19, which are considered exempt or salaried employees. So they're not overtime or comp eligible. The first position allocation to pay change is a digital services librarian to be retitled to administrative public services librarian to better reflect the roles and responsibilities of the position. The next one is the executive assistant position being retitled. There's currently two executive assistant positions within town. They'll be remaining a grade 11. However, we're going to change the titles for both of them. One will be the executive assistant to the police department. And the next would be executive assistant and communications manager so that it better defines the roles and responsibilities of those positions. Number three is the assistant facility superintendent, which is being proposed to be retitled and reclassified from grade 10 in recognition of the additional responsibilities and expectations of the supervisory position, which includes serving in place of the director in their absence to move to a grade 12. Number four is the recreation center manager. Adjusted compensation from a grade 11 to ensure that the town remains competitive with other organizations for this key position. This position is comparable to the senior services director position, which is currently being compensated at a grade 12. The deputy clerk, or the deputy, excuse me, town clerk reclassification, it was reclassified in September of 2024 from a grade 10, when the previous town clerk retired and transition occurred to ensure that the positions remained competitive with other similar positions in the town as well as nearby municipalities. Number six is the deputy town assessor. The position was created in 2023 as part of a transition in the assessor department, reclassified from a grade 10 to ensure the position remains competitive with surrounding communities in alliance with internal compensation rates for deputy director positions.
So let's talk about number seven, the deputy director of administrative services position. That's Amy. So that's why I, I'm talking about it and not her. So the, that position, this was my idea to put this on, and I'll, I'll explain why. The, in any continuity of operations, which is something that every complex organization, which the town is, strives for, is to have someone to step in the place of the person who's in charge, a director or whoever, in the event of whatever, illness, death, vacation, not able to do the job, whatever. And from the day I got here, I strived to put a deputy with a director to learn the ropes, understand the job. If a person leaves, there's someone that can take their place. If there's an illness, if there's some emergency, whatever, there's someone to take their place. That is extremely important in any organization that has a hierarchy the way the town does. And we were almost at the point where we've completed that. Everything except HR. And that job has become so complex right now, I don't even know how they function. There's, she's the full-timer and then there's a part-timer with hundreds of employees every day calling about benefits, pay. We've had some personnel issues that we haven't addressed. That's a big one, going to grievance hearings and so forth and so on. So that position, in, in the three major positions I've held in my life, public safety for the state, director of public safety, town manager in our answer in here, I can honestly say that Amy is one of the most attentive human resource managers that I've ever, ever met. And, and she works very hard. And I think she should have the title of deputy director of, of that unit and get a very nominal pay raise with it. So that's why I included that in there for no other reason than that. So that, that's one, I, I didn't want her to comment on that. I wanted to comment on that.
All right. Thank you, Jim.
As Jim had stated at the beginning of this hearing, the salary increase of 3% was adopted within the fiscal year 2526 budget. SKMEA members will also receive a 3% increase with similar benefit package. Non-union typically follows SKMEA increases to maintain coordination of salary tables and position pay, as well as remain competitive with surrounding communities for similar positions. And Jim, did you want to speak to number two we said?
Yes. Longevity, the L word, as the state calls it, that's something they phased out and they, they, it's, it's not something that is popular amongst employers. We really should be called retention pay. And what I mean is that it's a very competitive market for municipal employees. The higher you go, the tougher it is to fill positions. And, and each town is unfortunately is pitting itself against each other to get the best people to work for. We have a very good workforce. And the reason is not because we're the highest paid, it's because the work-life balance here is very good and they make a fair pay. So that's why we've been very lucky to do this. Our, the last contracts, we have four unions in this town, the last three contracts have some form of retention pay built in to help with longevity, which is technically what you really could call it, to help them want, so the longer you're here, the more you want to stay because there's an incentive to keep you here. But one thing, the non-union personnel were exempted from longevity. It's, quite honestly, because it was very expensive. It would have been a burden to the town. And that was my decision as well. That was a tough decision. But we have to make some type of amends to non-union personnel. So the 3% increase, and the state has been giving out much bigger increases than that. And, and, you know, our, our senior staff are constantly attempted to be poached by other municipalities and the state. But this retention pay is a big one. What, what we're proposing is each person gets $2.55 a week, increased to $2.65 a week extra for retention pay. It's 10 cents. Comes up to $4,200 for all the non-union personnel for the year. Now, to give you an example, there was recently a retiree, one person that was getting approximately 5,600, Brian, was it 5,200, which was it?
Uh, 5,200.
$5,200 in, in longevity. So we can, by phasing in a fair and equitable amount to all the non-union personnel, 10 cents extra a week on top of the $2.55 they're getting extra a week, would only cost enough, someone who retired was getting 5,200 in, in like a longevity pay, which we phased out that word. But now we can do all the non-union employees to get a minimal nominal amount for $4,200 for all of them collectively. I think it's a step in the right direction. It's not going to solve everything, but that, that's why you'll see that in here. That's it. That's what I have.
So Jim, just to clarify, so we're all kind of understanding what you're saying here. The way it used to work with longevity is once you reach a certain milestone, you get lump sum. Whereas with this retention pay, you sort of gradually get paid over time. So it's not never really a lump sum. Go ahead. Can you explain that?
Well, retain, let's not try and play a shell game here. Retention pay really is like a longevity. And longevity is really like a retention pay. So longevity was, but like you said, like when you work for the state, if after 10 years, you get a 15% increase in your salary, you go 15 years, you get another increase. You get 20 years, you get another increase. Odds is, is much more gradual here in town. But so it's not like you get a lump sum. It's just that the numbers are kind of higher. We kind of phased, our long, our longevity pay in this town was very low compared to other municipalities. So we've, we now call it retention pay because that's what it is. It's retaining the people that want to be here. But to answer your question specifically, it is a slow gradual process. The more years you work here, the more that retention pay would go up incrementally.
And it makes it better to manage from a financial management perspective?
I think it's, that's part of it, but it's also a fair way into, I, I think that's part of it. But it also, it does help to retain the good people that are here that we lose normally in that three to eight-year mark. The people that are really coming up with knowledge that they finally know the job well, and that's why they're so sought after anywhere in the state. So that, that's really what it is, to retain the good people we have, especially in that group of, that, those years, three, five, eight years.
It allows them to get the pay faster without having to wait to meet that metric.
Well, with the nominal increase, it would, yes.
Okay.
Can I just ask a quick question? So the 4,200, is that what you said, 4,200?
Yes.
That is for all employees, for all the non-union?
All the non-union.
That are eligible?
That's right.
It's not the delta, right? It was 3,500 and then it's additional 4,000? That's just what we're going to spend in longevity?
That's the increase for the year would be the $4,200.
Okay. So what are we spending now on longevity?
Approximately. I don't have the total amount in front of me, but approximately. I did look at this today, uh, leading up to the meeting. A non-union longevity for the upcoming fiscal year that starts on July 1st is approximately 47,000. As the town manager mentioned, because of a recent retirement and we're going to have another departure in early July, the longevity is going to probably be in the range of 45, 44,000 as opposed to 47 that was budgeted.
Okay. I heard the 4,000. I'm like, that doesn't make sense.
That was the increase.
Okay. So my-
One, one other point on that, though, is that, that the numbers, as senior people retire and are not replaced with that senior salary and senior longevity and so forth and so on, it's called turnover savings. You, like, if you haven't filled a position for three months or six months, that, that is a chunk of money that's there that was not utilized.
Right.
And we do, talking to Brian, every one of these positions, every one of these things that we're looking at, these increases are covered by turnover savings by so many people leaving, retiring and so forth, that we have not filled a position. You have like three months, you have six months there, two months there, that are vacant.
We have made a number of changes to improve the non-union personnel package. They all got, a lot of them got extra week vacation. They got brought up instantly, right? A couple of years ago?
Yes, that's correct. So two years ago, when we went to this, this form of structure where there's a deputy town manager, for example, we were getting, we had senior people coming on to the town of South Kingston. People had 20 years' experience, 25 years' experience. They're being offered two weeks' vacation and, you know, whatever. That, that's a, that's an entry-level package.
I agree.
So we brought them all up to like, minimum, I think it was three weeks, and then we brought them up to four weeks. So people are motivated by titles, pay and time off.
Right.
And you always try and balance those so that it's, it's a fair package.
Right. Do you anticipate the retention pay increasing every year? Or is it sort of going to stay where it is?
I would, my recommendation is increases incrementally at the least every year. The reason is the retention pay that the unions got was lucrative. It was well-deserved, but it was lucrative. But there was a cost to the town for the non-union personnel that was high. And we're constantly trying to keep, respect the taxpayers and keep our costs low. But we still have to, not at the expense of people either. So I think this is a good balance.
Okay. I just have one more. Is it okay if I have one more question?
Go ahead.
I'm sorry. Amy's here and I just want to make sure. I'm looking at this pay pan exhibit one. And so it looks like every other deputy is a grade 10, but Amy will be a grade 13?
No, actually, every other deputy, there's one deputy that's a grade 10, that's a tax assessor. And that was a mistake on my part last year.
Okay.
That was omitted. So with that, this is why that one's going to elevate it immediately to a grade 12. Okay? The, the, Amy is going to a grade 13 because of monumental task. She's a grade 12 already.
Right.
So hers is even more incremental. But, but you are correct. Most of the deputies are-
Well, they're 10.
12. They're 12s. No, not 10s.
Well, they're 12s. Personnel administrator?
Yes.
Deputy building official?
They started lower. They started as 10s and they've incrementally worked up to 12. She started, she's, starts at 12 and now incrementally goes up to a 13. Be my goal to incrementally move the rest up at some point to that level.
Okay. I don't mean to have that conver, it's, it's an awkward conversation because she's actually at the table. I didn't mean it to sound awkward.
No, that's fine. That's fine.
I'm just trying to understand.
That's fine.
When one person becomes a 13 and every other deputy is a 12, my brain thinks eventually we're going to do that. And so I'm wondering what the non-union personnel costs are going to be, how they've grown over the years. I think it's, it's, it's when the, I don't know what the NEA union, those unions get a 2% raise and this union get 3% raise. I just want to do my due diligence because-
No, these are good questions. And that's why I want to air it out right now. So let's, so the other unions got a base of a 2% raise, a base of a 3% raise. There were many other incentives in there, including the longevity. So we, or the retention, I'll keep calling it retention. So they got a higher retention with a, a more lower base as a raise. The non-union got zero, or now they're getting a very small amount if, if passed by the council, and, and their raise was a 3%. But I would say this, the union personnel got better packages than the non-union. There's no doubt.
Okay. And do you anticipate, so I'm also confused on why we didn't talk about the new positions in the budget process?
I don't think there's, these aren't new positions. These are existing positions that are being elevated to a different title or a different grade. There were no new positions here. No, no new FTEs.
And the increase in salaries expense associated with the increase in grades here was adopted in the budget that we passed. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. That's a good question. Thank you.
Yes. Well, all but two. Two were put in at my request. One was a mistake, the tax assessor. That was not budgeted. But we have more than enough funds to fund that from the turnover savings. And this one here, which is, goes from a grade 12 to a grade 13, although it was not in the budget, we, our turnover savings is quite a bit. So we, we have more than enough money that was not spent in turnover savings for positions not filled.
All right. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you for answering.
We've got a few more slides. Let's try to move through those. Then we're going to open up for this public hearing.
The next slide is the town solicitor compensation change slide. The town solicitor is a contracted service directly with the town council. A 3% increase was included in the fiscal year 2026 adopted budget program. And personnel is seeking further guidance from the town council regarding compensation changes. Oops. I think I hit two accidentally. Sorry. The town manager compensation change. The town manager is a contracted employee directly with the town council. Per contract, salary and/or benefits may be adjusted in such amounts determined desirable based upon the annual salary review conducted at the same time as similar consideration is given to other non-union employees. 3% increase was included in the fiscal year 2026 adopted program, or budget program. And again, personnel is seeking further guidance from the town council regarding salary and benefit changes.
Yeah. All right.
So Jim, do you get the longevity pay too?
No, I haven't been here long enough. This is the part of the, this is the part of conversation I hate right here. I don't like asking for anything.
I know. It's yucky.
I really don't. I don't. I'm very uncomfortable. But as a town manager and a town solicitor, we work for you. You appoint us. So we're not really covered by, we're not just a regular employee. Yeah, I can't be lumped in in what your decision is for all the other employees. This is up to you. So-
So you don't get, so the longevity?
I don't get longevity, no. Well, I don't get longevity. I've only been here three years. I wouldn't be eligible for-
Would you be eligible? I don't, I don't, I'm just, just a general question.
I don't even know that answer.
Do you know?
Yes, I believe his contract does state he would be eligible.
Okay.
To how many years? I don't, I don't know that answer.
The same as them?
The same as the non-union benefits.
And what would that be? How many years?
So with the proposal, it would be after three years, a completion.
I'm just-
Okay.
I'm just asking.
Any other questions from council members before we open this up?
No question.
All right. This is a public hearing. So anyone in the audience who wishes to speak on this matter we've been discussing, I invite you to come on up. We just asked you to introduce yourself. We're going to limit you to five minutes. All right. Seeing none, do I hear a motion to close the public hearing? Oh, no. All right. Come on up. Uh, you got to click the button on the right.
Jennifer Nurban. Just going to talk about a few things tonight. Jay Wegomond.
Uh, sorry. This is, this segment is specific to the public hearing, which is the allocation of pay schedule, which we've been discussing. Public comment will come next.
This isn't public comments. I thought you said public comments.
This is not public comments. This is a public hearing.
Oh, I apologize.
Okay. I'll ask again, anyone in the audience in your- I'll ask again, anyone in the audience interested in speaking on this topic, the public hearing, the allocation of pay schedule fiscal year 2526? Seeing none, do I hear a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion in a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, the public hearing is now closed. Want to talk about this a little further? Do we want to vote on it? What do we have?
Talent management is one of the most difficult parts of trying to keep your employees in public sphere, and I appreciate you both walking us through this tonight. I'm in favor of this.
All right. I'm also in favor. I think we have a great staff, everyone does a great job, great presentation tonight. You know, we have to continually find a way to incentivize, you know, our workers, not only the union personnel, but non-union personnel. They're not always covered by, you know, the contract bargaining agreements, which they, you know, negotiate in good faith with management. You guys do a good job. We always see all of you in face, you're at the meetings, you present to us, so we appreciate your work and, you know, happy to get this across the finish line. I will be voting in support. So do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion to approve item eight A.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion in a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that passes. It's now going to bring us to new business, item nine. We're going to jump to item nine K. That is a resolution authorizing six twenty-nine Suketash LLC doing business as Matunik Oyster Bar to establish temporary outdoor dining and liquor service at six fifty Suketash Road as presented in accordance with Rhode Island General Law's forty-five dash twenty-four point seven dash five temporary outdoor dining services subject to compliance with applicable state health and life safety regulations and local review and approval by town officials. We are joined by Perry Rosso and his attorney. Go ahead.
Thank you. I'm Richard Buretta from Out of the Pollack, and I represent Matunik Oyster and Perry Rosso. We're grateful, grateful to the council for submitting a resolution in support of opening a temporary restaurant while Perry re-bills. We're here tonight following Governor McKee's signing of H sixty-three ninety-two and Senate Bill eleven thirty-nine. These bills were sponsored by your local representatives, McAtee Fogarty in Tanzi, and also Senator Sosnowski. The bills are now law and allow for a temporary location that you approve. I know that the council has been provided with a proposed plan for the Marina parking lot across the road, excuse me, from the restaurant. The plan was prepared by Saint Gene Engineering. Perry and Rick Saint Gene are here tonight to provide an overview and answer any questions.
All right, thank you.
Hi, Perry Rosso from Matunik Oyster Bar. Believe you guys have the, the plan of the, the layout of the parking lot, and I'd be happy...
Can we get this on the screen? Brian, Jim, Amy?
So what I'm hoping to do is create, you know, more than just a food truck experience, but have tableside dining as well as grab-and-go food that you might imagine from a food truck. And so because of that, we brought in some refrigeration as well as, you know, a dish trailer and a, a, a mobile kitchen, and, you know, things we've been sourcing for a while, as well as, it's labeled as a bar box. We got it from Apennog Brewery, who got it during COVID, that's kind of container, a shipping container that they retrofitted into a pretty cool bar. And over the years, my contractor, John Jacobal, and he's also here, and I have been saving some of the, kind of the relic bars through the outside bar that we had and the pewter bar that we had, and we're going to incorporate them inside for the raw bar, which we've been working with the Department of Health on and waiting their final inspection on Thursday. And so we're hoping to create a really, a, a, a nice atmosphere for the guests there and be able to keep people working, hopefully create some revenue and create a, a, a cool spot.
All right, thank you, Perry.
Thanks.
Any questions? Very good.
Perry, glad to see this, glad to get back on your feet. I, we had one question about, folks were asking about Marina parking down there and about if people trying to use the docks will have, you know, a sign parking down there. Is that, is that the case?
Yes, they will, and just like previous years, actually in the bottom of that screen, if you scroll down, there's, you'll see, a little bit more, actually. There's, there's a little bit more, sorry. I should have this on my own computer, but, we'll have, on, on the, on the right here is Marina parking, and on the left will be valet parking, but we'll also have, I believe, forty-four marked spots, plus there's some street parking, only three or four spots on the street, but around forty-four spots in the lot. I believe you guys might also have that, that lot. So whereas in the past, we were, cars would pull into the restaurant, we'd park them at the Marina. Now, cars will be parking, pulling in the Marina, and we'll be parking them at the restaurant. And we'll also be asking our boat slipholders, after they unload the stuff, if they don't mind, you know, parking in the restaurant parking lot where there's much more parking, or, you know, if they want to park there, there's still, it looks like around twenty-eight or so spots in, that are designated just for them there. But we'll also, in the past, the valet's been successful, ask them to leave their keys or have them park the, the actual Marina vehicles as well, although we won't require the Marina people to do that. That will be kind of alternative parking.
Great, yeah. Of the hundreds of, of comments of support, there was just a few questions about the Marina parking, so I'm glad you addressed it. Thank you.
Absolutely, thanks.
Go ahead.
So I happened to drive by yesterday, and it was a little confusing because there's a Basil's...
Basil and Bones food truck?
Yes.
No, we didn't rebrand. That's a, that's the food truck we bought from all the way upstate New York, yep.
All right, because I'm like, wow, it's bright red and it says...
Yeah, it's the worst.
Exactly.
Yeah, yeah.
I figured you were getting a deal on something. So my question is, it, your, your attorney and you have said it's temporary, so I think, Perry, you could have a picnic table in a minefield, and people are going to show up and eat your food. And I'm not exaggerating, it's not hyperbole, but I think people are concerned that you're going to maintain that going forward. It's your intention just to have a restaurant operate in its original location, right? This temporary space is just a temporary space?
That's correct.
You're not going to come and be like, this is my new takeaway spot?
No, that, that is not, that is not the plan at all, no.
Because people in the community, you know...
I heard someone mention that to me over the weekend too, and that is definitely not on my radar and my plan at all.
Okay, because it's a very, not you, but it's just a very busy road with lots of traffic going to other things. So I just didn't, it's a, it's dicey as it is in terms of traffic control there, you do a great job, but I just was concerned of public safety on that, too?
Yeah, we are going to have valet on day one in full force, ready to figure out, you know, we have a plan for what we think is the best way to deal with the traffic, and then, you know, we will adapt and improve as, as time goes on with, you know, both the menu and the parking and everything else.
Yeah, yeah.
To alleviate that concern, the bill that was passed...
Can you just, sorry?
The bill that was passed, the statute that exists now, the law that exists now, only allows this to occur while the rebuilding is taking place.
No, I understand that, but I didn't, I didn't know, I mean, it's, it's sort of like how the rooftop bar and all the COVID restrictions, they were temporary and then they became permanent, so people are just wanting to make sure that, you know, it doesn't over-expand into a very small little area and...
I have no intention of doing that, that is, I, I, you know, have the consequences of, of the congestion as well, that, you know, before we had reservations, you know, being, having to be on the road to manage traffic, you know, every night between like four-thirty and eight was, was, was not fun for me or the people trying to visit the restaurant. So, you know, I, I, I don't want to do anything that's going to make the traffic situation any worse when we do rebuild. So I, you know, that space is really valuable to me for parking, and, and it will be hopefully again soon, next year, hopefully.
Yeah, so that was my other question. How long do you think it'll take to rebuild your place?
I have a, my target date is May twentieth of twenty, twenty-six, which is very aggressive, but if we can get things moving in the right direction, there is hope for that. I'm not, you know, we're so far away from that, that's just my, my hope right now.
And just one last question, thank you everybody for giving me this. So, and when the weather changes and it's cool out, will you be able to heat whatever space you have?
I'm not sure how, how well that area is going to heat, and my employees are also concerned about that, what's going to happen in, you know, when it gets cold, and I...
Crossing that bridge?
I tell them, I, you know, we had a month to figure out something to do since the fire, and we figured something out, and now we have about three months to figure something else out, and I, I will do my best to figure something else out.
I, I really hope the best for you too.
Thank you.
That's why I was worried about the, what will happen and when it's cold and people don't want to sit outside.
Yeah, I, I, that's, that'll be, you know, once I get operating on, on Monday and smooth things out, I'll, I'll, that will be my next, my next mission, so figuring out winter, but...
God bless you.
Thanks, I appreciate it.
I want to, I want to congratulate you on having been able to put this together. Pivoting like this in the face of a tragedy is very difficult, and one of the lessons I think government has learned out of COVID is to be able to assist when there's a catastrophic event that interrupts business. So I'm all in favor of the resolution and I'll be happy to introduce the motion. I would suggest to the manager, because this is something very new, literally the ink is not dry on the bill yet, that the manager and the building inspector report back to the council every thirty days or so on how this is going. But I, I wish you the best, I hope this works.
Well, it's all thanks to a lot of people in, in this room, so thank you.
So I just would like to say, say thank you for the example that you're setting for our community, because a lot of times, bad things happen, and it's really nice to see your example of how you're, how you've responded and how the community has responded, and I just want to thank you for like, having your hope and not giving up. So, thank you.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Perry, a few questions.
Sure.
It's always, not always easy to make sense of, you know, just like the plans, but the sort of, I don't know, I'll put a picture in my mind here. It's going to be like a tent set up, you're going to have a bar, you're going to have a lot of tables.
So the, the tented area is that gray area, and then the boxes are labeled bathroom, bar, and, and kitchen. The, the raw bar and the, you know, the outside bar are going to be situated adjacent to what's labeled as bar box. Maybe not the best label, but it's essentially a bar that's made out of a shipping container. And so that's right there, so that's going to be the, the, the bar that servers get drinks for tables and customers can also get drinks there. But they'll, the raw bar will be to the left of that, and then the, the outside bar that used to be on the patio, we, we stored. I don't know why we stored it until now, now I know why we stored it, so we're breaking it out, and that will be to the right of, or actually more, you know, pretty much where the cursor is right now, only, only down a little bit, yeah, right over there, so people will be able to look out over the water.
Nice. And opening date?
Soft opening is June thirtieth, and actual open is July first.
All right, so should we make our calls now for reservations or...
I, yeah, yeah, we, I don't, I don't think, the manager, general manager asked if we should open reservations, and, and I, it's like, let me make sure DOH and everything clears up to before I have to make another million calls about how we can accommodate them. So I, I wanted to make sure we had all the permits before I opened up reservations.
All right, well, happy to see you get back on your feet and get this going, I'm excited to see how this goes.
Thank you all so much.
I have a motion, a resolution authorizing six-two-nine Suketash LLC doing business as Matunik Oyster Bar to establish temporary outdoor dining and liquor service at six fifty Suketash Road, AP eighty-seven, Assessor's Plot eighty-seven-two, Lot Four, as presented in accordance with Rhode Island General Law's section forty-five dash twenty-four dash point seven dash five temporary outdoor dining services subject to compliance with applicable state health and life safety regulations and local review and approval by town officials.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion in a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that passes. Good luck, Perry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Maybe you'll sleep in the wintertime, Perry, because I'm sure you haven't slept yet. I'm sure you haven't slept much.
All right, that's going to bring us back up to new business, item nine A. This is associated with the public hearing that just passed. Am I correct on that?
Yes, yep, it's the benefits associated with it, the non-union benefit schedule.
All right. Do I hear a motion to approve this item?
Motion to approve nine, nine A.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion in a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that passes. It's now going to bring us to item B. Brian Sylvia?
So I tried to merge, I know we're supposed to have a discussion at the last meeting, or actually the last few meetings on the, thank you so much, on the fund balance policy and fund balance, so I tried to merge that with the year-end transfers as they do go hand-in-hand, so I kind of merged the two topics on this presentation. This is just the cover page and some of the things I'd be covering, I'm just going to move along right to the second page. Oh, let me maximize it, and... So, the fund balance policy has been established, so the town has, was adopted, so we can maintain an investment grade of the town. It ensures that we have a cash flow, we meet our cash flow needs. This reduces the town's susceptibility to emergency or unanticipated expenditures as well as revenue shuffles. And finally, as discussed previously through the budget process, the policy calls for a, a percentage of ten to seventeen percent of general operating fund revenues for the fund balance. I'm going to dive into, we hear that a lot, I wanted to take the next page just to go into what is the general fund operating revenues. So for the fiscal year that'll be starting on July first, this is the breakdown of operating revenues. So you get the operating budget at thirty-four million dollars, and then the transfers out that the general fund supports, various other funds or operating funds the general fund supports. School fund at fifty-five million, the senior service fund at a half a million dollars, the rec center fund at four hundred and thirty-eight thousand, the debt service fund at two hundred, two-point-three million dollars, and finally, waste order of four thousand. Those combined are ninety-three million dollars and three, ninety-three million, three hundred thousand dollars, and the cap of that, so the seventeen percent cap would equal fifteen million, fifteen-point-eight million dollars.
Do we have this? Do we have this piece of paper, or is, are we not, I'm just looking through, no one has this, right?
Uh...
Okay, okay.
I did this today, we're still working the, the year-end transfers out, even as of today, so I just got, I prepared this today, but...
That's okay, I just, we have five handouts here and I didn't see it.
Understood. So to walk you through the year-end results, projected results, the top line is the property tax revenue. Now, this is made up of the current year tax levy for the year, the prior year tax revenue, interest on taxes, and payment and lieu tax programs. I'm going to spend the most time on this one because obviously it's the largest one, making up a large portion of the total revenue of the town. The current year tax levy, or the current, the current tax bills that went out for fiscal year twenty-five, the town collected seventy, or is anticipated to collect seventy-five-point-eight million dollars on a budget of seventy-five point, just under seven thousand, seven hundred thousand dollars. So we're over, we, we're finishing the year ahead by a hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars projected, or collecting one hundred point two-four percent. Prior year tax revenue is coming in, we're projecting it's coming in slightly under budget at ninety-five point four, nine-four percent, at five hundred and eight thousand dollars. So that's under by about twenty-one thousand. Interest on taxes coming in at eighty-nine percent of the budget, which, so coming in Interest on taxes coming in at 89% of the budget, which so coming in a little bit under and we're under budget by about $37,000. And finally, pilots came in ahead of budget by $26,000 and that's how you arrive. Those those items altogether combined is how you arrive at the property tax revenue coming in at over budget by $149,000 or 100.19%. State aid finished ahead at 100, ahead by $118,000. The drivers there would be the public service corp tax, which came in $33,000 over budget. The hotel tax came in $54,000 over budget and federal grants came in $24,000 over budget. Licenses and permits came in over budget by $150,000. Driving force there, I don't see them anymore, building building permits and all the building, electrical, plumbing, and mechanical combined were over budget by $112,000. So they had a they had a very good year, a lot of permits. That office was working. Next up would be investment income. Investment income is projected to finish the year $640,000 ahead of budget. That's obviously the driving force, representing more than half of this revenue overage. And that is what it is. That is revenue from investments for the cash on hand of the town. The next two items should be really taken together. We've talked about this through the budget process, department revenue and transfers in. So previously, the work done by the Facilities Department, there was a chargeback in department in miscellaneous revenue and the department revenues. That is no longer the case. It's now operating transfer in. So if you net those two sections together, they're coming out ahead by about $71,000. The other driving force in the transfer in is, as you recall, the the employee settlement fund where we had a transfer in of about $200,000. That was the other contributing factor in having transfer in exceeding budget. So overall, revenue is projected to finish the year ahead of budget by $1,130,000. On the expenditure side, overall expenditure is projected to finish the year just under budget at just over 98%. So we're looking to finish the year with a surplus on the expenditure side of just under $650,000. Most, most of this, most of the, as as the town manager alluded to tonight in our earlier discussion, most of this does relate to savings on personnel where there were vacancies throughout the year. That is pretty much entirely the case with the general government where you're seeing the revenue, I'm sorry, the expenditure under budget. On public safety, that is, the driving force there is EMS. EMS is finished and projected to finish the year over budget by $422,000. Every of the department in public safety, police and communications, police as a whole, all the divisions combined and communications both will be projected to finish the year under budget. I believe police by about 100 plus thousand and EM and I'm sorry, communications by about 5,000 under budget. Leisure services combined, projected to finish the year at $171,000 under budget. Some of that was from, again, my mind around blank. Seasonal salaries was under budget and wages were under budget. And we'll get into this in the future slide, but the 100,000 that was set aside for Nois Farm was not fully expended. So there was about 40,000 of that. 170 was related to Nois Farm. Library administration came in under budget by about just under $90,000. Again, a large portion of that was personnel costs related. And the largest other item that you're seeing in the budget, that non-departmental, that the town is not did not is not recommending to make the transfer for OPEB this year, as the town's OPEB fund is funded at 150%. So normally, we would be expending those funds out of the non-departmental. The other being, in non-departmental, there was a large amount, approximately 200,000 set aside in that area for contractual obligations for the settlement. And that, again, we never reopen the budget and disburse those funds within the departments, but it's savings nonetheless for the general fund as a whole in that unit. So overall, between revenue and expense, the budget will be coming in projected for the year a surplus of $1,780,000.
$1,780,000.
And $80,000.
Surplus.
Surplus. In terms of the, this is a summary of the proposed transfers. The first item is the proposed transfer to the Recreation Capital Reserve. This is $100,000 of this. $41,800 is the remaining amount associated with Nois Farm. They'd like to move that to the Capital Reserve and keep that project moving. An additional $30,000 would be needed for Nois Farm for a there was a repairs that are needed for a culvert at the parking area of Nois Farm that was not anticipated at the start of this project. $30,000 will be needed to repair that. And there was also an additional $28,200 requested for enhanced parking and overflow parking at Marina Park. The $265,000 for DPS is associated with roads and bridge and dam work. That is for including the Fresh Meadows Brook Culvert and Broad Rock Road and development operations of a maintenance plan for the Wakefield Dam. The S K, the Police Department Building Maintenance Reserve that is being requested for $200,000 as part of the Opera Funds allocation. $200,000 was utilized of Opera Funds to replace the roof on the Public Safety Building. And those $200,000 was then removed from the Building Maintenance Reserve of the Police Department and went to Old Mountain Field. And that was a one-for-one shot, but now that there were many projects that were gonna be funded from this reserve, the Building Maintenance Reserve, and the funding now is not in place and available for some of those projects. So they were looking forward to replenish those funds so they can move on projects which range from parking lot improvements, gate access system for the parking lots, and perimeter security fencing. Next up would be a proposed transfer of $73,000 to the Library Improvement Fund. This would be work, a $15,000. This would go, $15,000 of that would go towards the roof replacement at the Kingston Library. And $45,000 would go towards the Peastale Roof. Now, most of the roof at Peastale would be covered by the CLC grant, but there are portions that will not be covered. We've been told and it won't be under the roof and we have to pay for that. So that's where this funding would be going. And then the balance of funding or $13,000 would be going towards computer and various equipment we would need that are not gonna be covered by the CLC grant.
Great.
Next up would be the Planning Department Reserve. That is a pretty much one-for-one result of operations for the planning department. That's about where they're gonna be finishing the year and they're looking to keep those monies in check and in their reserves so they can use those going forward for their reoccurring expenses as they come. Next is a new, the request, the $20,000 is a request for establishment of a new fund, a traffic study fund. I believe this has come up a few times recently and this would set aside fund, a fund for traffic and calming initiatives as they come up. And finally, I'm sorry, there's two more. Next would be the Debt Service Fund. So this would be moving $150,000 to the Debt Service Fund. I should note as part of this, I mentioned in an email, but just to full picture, the the interest for the bands came in about $88,000 less than we were anticipating at budget time. So what would be going into Debt Service Fund would basically be this $150 and that $88, so about $240,000 would be going in. Or we wouldn't be needing the $88,000 for the expenses and we'd be looking to add $150. And finally, the Grant Match Fund. We'd be looking to move $185,000 into the Grant Match Fund. Presently, I didn't get a, Luke has a really good handle on this, the deputy town manager. There is a lot of funds there that are earmarked, but not necessarily encumbered yet. In my last discussions with Luke on this, we had about between $300,000 and $400,000 that was not encumbered or earmarked at this time. And we felt it necessary to move that up as it was just two years ago, it was 2023 that we put a million dollars into that. Now it is starting, we're more than halfway through that money, so we're looking to increase that. So the total of all the requested transfers would be just over a million dollars at $1,800,000 and 185. And that would move to the next slide, which takes you through this. So the top line is the most recent audit of financials and what you had on hand. So that is the on the audited unassigned fund balance as of the most recent audit at $16.7 million. We are projecting a surplus of operations for 25 of $1.7 million. We are requesting the year-end transfers for 25 of just over a million dollars. And we would, we have adopted the use of fund balance for the next fiscal year of $1,659,000. So that would that would equate to an estimated unassigned fund balance as of June 30, 2025 of $15.8 million. And that, as a percentage of revenue, would take the unassigned fund balance down to 17%.
All right. Thank you, Brian. Go ahead.
Can you remind us what the Government Finance Officers Association recommendation is for percentage of operating revenues?
Approximately two months, which would be 17% or just under 17%, yes. I think if it works, it works out to like 16.67% so.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
So I'm not really sure if this is a good question or not, but just in terms of, you know, we're talking about wanting to do the homestead exemption. And so with some of this money being, you know, like some money that we save from taxes, that about half of it is that 649, which is the 1.98% of the budget which wasn't spent, that was allocated. So should we start thinking about having a fund that would, you know, sort of begin that process for the homestead exemption? Or is that not a logical thought or?
Just just to clarify first, in terms of overage on tax revenue, tax revenue all in. So that's again where you're talking current year taxes, prior year taxes, interest on taxes and pilots or payment and lieu taxes is projected to finish the year at about $185,000 ahead of budget. Not the 640 was actually the investment income. So taxes are looking to come in at just under $200,000 ahead of budget. Terms of, that's that's a policy decision. I don't mean to put it back, but.
So it is, it is something that we could do. It's not like a crazy idea.
Brian, let me, Brian, let me just interject on that. So that would be like tax relief. That'd be like immediate tax relief if you choose to go down that path. The goal of a homestead exemption is to give like more permanency to it, so it's happening every single year. We have a one-shot deal, whether whatever that number is, if you want, that's that's tax relief. That you you, not that you're creating a structural deficit, but you you couldn't do that every year unless you had that kind of surplus. But the homestead has a different goal.
So I I I don't know if I understood you correctly, but I think you were asking, should the council establish, go back, a reserve fund?
Right.
That's what you're asking.
Basically.
Yeah, I got you. Can you go back one, Brian, to your, you had, so you're asking, is it a council decision to establish a new object code with reserve detail that says homestead exemption?
Right. So and at least it sort of indicates that we're
Identifying.
Like really avidly and ardently, you know, working towards that goal. And even if it's not a lot, it would be a start.
So I just, I want to just follow. If if, can the council establish a reserve fund at any time in the term? Like, say in August, we say Patty had a worthy idea that we should allocate money. Can we do that for take it from the undesignated fund balance at any time?
We could do it right now if we want.
Yeah, you could. Of course you could. You're the council. That's a policy decision.
But can I speak a little to this?
So I just asking that, just so, I think your idea is worthy and it might be, so but we don't have to do it tonight. That was, that's what I learned from asking the questions.
I think, you know, it's interesting to think about whether we should, you know, keep some of the surplus, you know, parked in the undesignated fund balance for the purpose to help ease any type of homestead exemption relief we find. But I also think that, you know, the the goal of the homestead exemption is to provide, you know, year-round residents with relief and the offset being the non-year-round residents have to pick up the difference, such that the tax revenue generated from all parties is still the same as now. It's just there's relief for the residents and the non-residents have to pick up, you know, that offset there. So I could see how you would, how how it could be helpful to have an amount set aside to help ease any type of relief we give to residents. But I don't think, you know, that is sort of the goal with our homestead exemption. But I like the, I like the line of thinking there. Some other questions I just have here, Brian. If we were to, you know, allocate more money to the Debt Service Fund, would that help in, I guess, alleviating the increase in taxes associated with the, you know, the bond? Can you go ahead with that?
Absolutely. So on one hand, just so you know, in doing that, I mean, this is a $150 million bond, which is, that's just principal. You're gonna have interest, so like, what I, what I'm getting at with that is the bill's coming and and we're gonna have to tax for it eventually. By adding more money to the Debt Service Fund, what we can do is, what the town would be able to do is, where we've been working off of, say, a five-year ramp up, maybe we can, if we have more money in there, maybe we can get a seven-year ramp up and make it a slower process. And maybe so it's less painful each year. So that would be, we can certainly do something like that as more funds go into the Debt Service Fund. That's one thing we can do. We'll have more money in there and we can, we can mitigate that, the large increases each year and spread them a little more.
Good.
So I want, I wanted to say at the last meeting that that Debt Service Fund was exactly what I wanted to present it as an option. I had a conversation with Jim afterward, so I really appreciate that. It's an option that we can consider, but we could also, I'm hearing, we could do more because I've had a conversation with Patty about my feeling is I would like to reduce the the known tax increase that we're gonna have from a $150 million bond. We heard in the community two years ago that it was 15, 20%. And if we keep pushing money over into the Debt Reserve Fund, we could smooth that out longer or we could smooth it out so it's 6, 8% over however many years. So that's what I am happy to see that that's there and I would consider any other recommendation to increase that. Because that is tax relief for every person, whether they're a resident, full-time or part-time, because that cost of the bond, we're all gonna pay if we're a property owner. So I'd like to see if there's any more we can do. But I'm happy with an option.
The one thing I I can't give you a number on, as we heard tonight, that by Thursday, we're gonna be having $55 million more in our bank account that we'll be earning interest on.
Right.
That's gonna be going into our Debt Service Fund and that will be, I don't know what that interest will be, but that is exclusive for that Debt Service Fund and that will be available as well.
Right.
So that will be a nice chunk of change as well going forward, at least for this year.
Right.
How long will those monies sit before they're expended?
They will, once, once the shovel goes in the ground, those are gonna go, start to go pretty quickly. But, you know, for it'll, it's gonna be there and it'll start to go down, but it's, at least early on, it's gonna be there for a few months. Then it will start to go. Once we have the shovels in the ground, you're gonna see the invoices really.
Any projection as to the investment income associated with that?
We are anticipating a 4% interest on.
How about amount? Because I know that amount, the balance of the account is gonna keep going down. So what's, any projection as to the amount of investment income generated over the time of which money sit in that account?
Not as of yet.
Didn't the, didn't the lawyer in the work session say 510, 510,000?
That's what I heard.
That's what you heard?
But I don't know, that didn't really seem like a lot, though.
That's, that's the bond premium. So that's, that's where we, we got the bond premium upfront. So that's basically the, that interest that we're getting upfront, that again, we can stick in the bank and not only have that money when the bill comes due, but we can earn interest on that 510, 510,000 for the next year.
Is this kind of like cash back at closing when you buy a house?
Very similar, yes.
All right, so that makes sense. So this was what we discussed in the work session. So we got a bond premium because we have great credit. And so as a result, Bank of America, who bought our bond, paid an extra percentage point. Is that right?
They elected to.
Give a credit of some sort.
Yes, they elected to show it as a higher interest rate, but then give us the money upfront.
So this is a net positive for our town because we have a great credit rating?
Yes.
So just wanna put that out there.
So back to the Debt Service. Is there any other additional monies that you have identified that could go there? I understand the interest on the band, but is there any other money? Because that's 1,000,008 is, and it's 1.78 surplus. So you have spent the other 700,000 on something else?
Everything that's detailed here.
If you, you know, transferred more money from the undesignated fund balance, we'd get below the 17%.
That's correct. Yes.
But if you wanted to go back to that slide that we were just at, if you wanted to increase the amount transferred to Debt Service Fund, we could reduce the amount of transfers to the other funds. I'm open to that. If you want to double the amount to the Debt Service Fund to make it 300. three hundred.
But where would you get the money from? You'd take it from?
You would reduce the amount of the transfers to the other funds that are presented on the screen now.
But there's one point seven total in surplus. That's just in.
Yeah, by, by transferring these amounts, the one point zero zero eight, you bring the undesignated fund balance to seventeen percent of the operating revenue.
Correct.
Which is sort of the purpose of why we're reviewing these transfers to get it at that seventeen percent.
Right, and probably a hundred and fifty thousand is going to get us to sixteen point six seven, which you said is the governor's blah, blah, blah percentage, right?
What's that? I'm sorry, the.
The answer to your question.
But it was the seventeen percent.
Yes.
That is the benchmark.
I thought he said sixteen.
It was, yeah, it's sixteen point six seven and we, we have a policy to six, ten to seventeen, yes.
Right, so we could go to, we could go to, we don't have a policy of seventeen. We have twelve to seventeen, sorry. But the governor's policy, Mike, that you asked about is sixteen point what?
Approximately sixteen point six seven, I believe.
It was rounding.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, so, so there is another hundred and fifty thousand if we wanted to go to sixteen point seven.
But the other, oh.
Go ahead.
Just the, again, what we're doing with here is, we're not even doing, never mind audited results, we're not even dealing with final results. We have another week left of the fiscal year. We could get the audit out and when all is said and done, we still have a fund balance that represents seventeen point two percent. Maybe I'm a little heavy. You could then take action then and move whatever is extra at that time. This is not done yet. We're not, this is a projection at this point.
So we can increase, so I'm fine. I think that means we can establish this now and you'll come back to us maybe in thirty days and say, we're at seventeen point oh two, let's slide another fifty-seven thousand over to the debt service fund. I'm just throwing numbers out.
I would recommend late December, early January, that's when the next audit would be released for twenty twenty-five, once we have the audit in hand. Absolutely.
We will also have a lot more information on the federal budget and all of that because we know next year is going to be rough, so.
I just, I just, I just want to try to smooth out any sticker shock from the, the cost of the high school project because we can, because we're not, we're not, we're not, we're flush. I can't think of the opposite of flush, but there's a lot there and we should recognize and give to the community when we can. Thank you for nodding.
Yeah, I think that, that, that we, we definitely need to do everything that we can, so I'm happy that we're having this discussion.
Brian, we, the council also got notification from the National League of Cities and Towns that there were two bills passed that benefit municipalities. One is an increase in the hotel tax disbursement and the other is a change in the pilot legislation. Do you have any idea what we can derive from that?
As of now, no. I did reach out to the state today. I saw your email, thank you. I did reach out to the state. I reached out to the Office of Municipal Finance and they have an idea at this point what it means on the state level. They haven't had a trickle down to cities and towns. They anticipate having that for cities and towns by middle to late July.
So that's another thing we can come back to later.
Yes.
Excellent point. Brian, can you speak to what that legislation or I guess that passed enacted budget will do for the town in that respect? Can you just summarize what it does? It'll, it sends a portion of those monies to the host town? What is the percentage?
An increased portion. I, unfortunately, I, I, I don't know if you.
There, there were a couple of different bills.
Yes, and that's why.
It wasn't clear to me and what we received from the National League of Cities and Towns. There's also frankly, a third thing that Brian can't address, which is what they're calling fully funded state aid to education formula. And I, my expectation, I've already reached out to Carol Vedder and Mike Pedraza to find out what the difference is there because they should be receiving some additional state aid.
Okay. I feel comfortable to vote on this. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve item nine B.
Second.
All right, we got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that passes. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
It's going to move us to items C and D. Mark Russo, come on up.
Good evening. The first item I have here is a resolution authorizing an award of bid to Atlantic Elevator South of Seacon, Mass. for the elevator inspections, maintenance and repairs to all the municipal elevators for a three-year contract commencing July first, twenty twenty-five to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight. And then with the option, if we're satisfied with their service, to extend another two years to terminate in June thirtieth of twenty thirty. Some good news with this is the, these prices came in lower than what we were paying now. So, you know, things are trending in the right direction as far as elevator service go.
All right, Mark, we can do the next one, too.
Okay, so I worked with Julie Mason, the procurement administrator, and we contacted all of our mechanical services contractors and asked them to extend the contract one more year, holding their pricing at the current prices as they are now. So this resolution is authorizing a one-year extension to the mechanical services contracts beginning July first and on twenty twenty-five and ending on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six.
All right, any questions for Mark? Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve items nine C and nine D.
All right, we got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that passes. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
All right, it's going to move us to item E. Nicole Romaine, go ahead.
Good evening. What you have in front of you is a request to enter into an agreement with Atkins Printing Company for archival microfilming that we do for our land evidence probate and council records. We've been, Atkins has been with us since nineteen eighty-eight for these services, so they are very familiar with what our process is. And because we have upgraded some of our processing with getting them the records, a few things have come in at a cheaper price. So it's pretty, pretty routine.
All right, any questions for Nicole? Go ahead.
These will be, once they're properly digitized, they're going to be available publicly.
So all of these records are available publicly already? This is for the microfilming of those records as a backup and then they get stored with Iron Mountain.
All right, do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve item nine E.
Second.
All right, we got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that passes. Wait, Rich, Nicole, you got one more. Let's jump to item I here.
Okay, so this second one is for a contract extension with Narragansett Times for municipal advertising services. As you know, we are required to advertise a multitude of items in regards to public hearings, et cetera. So this is only requesting that we extend this contract for an additional two years.
All right, any questions for Nicole? Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve item nine I.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that passes. Rich, come on up.
Thank you. As you know, this is item F first, I guess. As you know, the, the treatment process at the wastewater plant is somewhat extensive. I mean, there's, you know, aerators, clarifiers, primary settling, secondary settling, all of that, chlorination, dechlorination. Some of you have seen this and I hope you come back. So, but, but there's one, there's one part of the process where we remove the solids and then we apply a polymer to those solids and that helps take the, it helps to, it's called flocculation and what it does is it brings all the suspended solids together and coagulates all of the other solids so that we can haul it off as, as solid material and it's incinerated. Now we do have a, you know, we call it liquid solids, which is a higher liquid content haul. And then we, a lot of this goes into our screw press, which presses out much of the liquid material. That goes back into the clarifiers and, and gets recirculated through the system or it goes back into the primary or the intake and then that gets recirculated again. Anyways, the polymer is what this request is for, so therefore I respectfully request the authorization to award a bid of contract to Atlantic Coast Polymer for the purchase of dry and liquid polymer at the prices.
Rich, we can jump to item G as well.
So we have three inspection vehicles in DPS. Two of them are not going to pass inspection this year, vehicle inspection this year, and we're going to be replacing them. This one is for, one of them that the inspection is actually up in July. I'd like to, I'd like to purchase this from McGovern up in Marlboro, Mass. You know, I'll note that they are part of the Greater Boston Police Council Contract Cooperative, so we can purchase it directly through them. We have purchased other vehicles through them, including recently, I believe, the inspector, the building inspector purchased a vehicle from them. He had great luck and I also received what I think was a good price of thirty thousand eight hundred and forty-nine dollars.
All right, thank you, Rich. Any questions?
Rich, we had corresponded on item F about the polymer and I understand it meets the requirements of the permitting process for DEM. My question, and you may not have an answer, and that's fine, is whether adding the polymer to the process winds up with us adding pollutants to the effluent that goes out into the ocean or the bay?
It does not. And the polymer is added, but then it's hauled off and incinerated. So it is not part of what's discharged.
A hundred percent.
Well, nothing's a hundred percent, but no, it is not, it is not, this is, also a, a couple of things to add about polymers and, and the flocculation process. It's also a part of water systems as well. If a water system is drawing from a river or from a reservoir, flocculation, flocculation is a part of that process to bring out the solids. So these are accepted materials across the board and very well accepted in the wastewater community and used heavily. I, you know, a hundred percent, I would say, I, I'd like to say yes, but there is a portion, so when we, when we apply the polymer, the, again, there's a coagulation of the solids, we bring that out, the liquid that's left behind is recirculated back into the system. What's, what remains, I, I don't believe that the polymer ends up getting put back. I think the polymer ends up staying with the solids, but, you know, nothing's a hundred percent.
What triggered the question from your memo was the, the reference to the company's proprietary chemicals.
Right.
Which I understand means we're not going to find out exactly what that is. But one of the things I'd kind of like us to start thinking about is anything and everything that we use that winds up in the ocean, because that's the end process of our wastewater treatment system. That's why I also asked you and Jim about PFAs because the current chaos out of Washington is they're delaying the implementation of regulations on PFAs for another two years and I'm not sure that we should take advantage of ignoring that for another two years. We have, everybody in this room has PFAs in their bloodstream and we don't know what that means.
That's right.
I just want us to think about it. That's why I was asking.
So, you know, the EPA, you know, again, yeah, like you're saying, there have been some rollbacks on some of that. That does not mean we're not, all the testing parameters are still required and we're still doing all the testing. On the water end, you know, that's what's happening. We, we are submitting our testing for PFAS for, to EPA and also to DEM. On the wastewater side, it's DEM mandating the testing. We have not received anything from EPA to say they want testing, but they are indirectly, they're, they're applying it, I'm, I'm, I'm pretty certain that DEM is getting this from EPA. So EPA is, is telling DEM, we want you to get out there and start testing. The testing is strictly to build a database. It is not regulatory at this point with wastewater, but I'm certain it will be. Okay, so I agree with you that these are concerns, but, you know, our testing is being done at the, the, the effluent coming in and the effluent going out. And there's not, there's not a big difference between these two, so I'm going to say that the polymer is not affecting that. But I agree that, that any, adding any of these chemicals is always a concern long-term, but this particular polymer, DEM has not represented that they have any concern with this particular polymer and it does not affect our permit. And, and there are the materials out there, by the way, that, that we could look to if we, you know, did see that maybe there was a problem here.
And that's, that's the discussion that I want us to start having, that's all. Thank you.
I agree with you.
Motion to approve item nine F and nine G.
Second.
All right, we got a motion to approve item F and G. We have a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that passes. Thank you, Rich.
Thank you.
All right, Terry Murphy, come on up.
New business item H is a recommendation to award a contract for restroom cleaning services for the park restrooms. This is new for the Parks Division. As the council may be aware, we've been challenged over the past few years to really retain and recruit particularly seasonal employees. We've also had turnover with our full-time employees where our staffing levels always are less than what they should be, for whatever reason that is. Most recently, our Parks Division has really struggled to have more than two mo crews out in the parks, which is really the very primary, basic function of our, our Parks Division among many, many other duties. One of, one of those duties being maintenance of the restrooms, which of course is critical. We don't want that to slide. What we're proposing is that we contract out for the restroom cleaning services with a third party so that we can utilize our park staff for the purposes of focusing on parks, not only parks, but some of the expanded scope of work that the crews now are taking on, including managing the, the main street part-time person who now will be taking care of the, the planters and the flowers. That's more of a management thing, but other items that have kind of gone by the wayside, like our nature trails maintenance and our bike trail maintenance. We are heavily focused right now on just maintaining the safety and playability of athletic fields and the public parks in general. So we are looking to go with a third party to take care of the park restrooms on a daily basis. And the recommendation is for an award to M and B Cleaning Services in the amount of thirty-three thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. That is for three seasons. That gets us from April to through October. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to, to answer them.
Any questions? I got one sort of related. On Juneteenth, I was getting it, getting after it on the B-ball court at West Kingston Park. You know, it was hot, sweating, dying. I noticed the water fountains weren't on. Do we turn those on anymore?
That water fountain is, will be being removed. That water fountain has not been on because it, it, it is frequently vandalized and it seems that there's more maintenance involved in keeping that water fountain up than not. So that, that should be taken away and it's, it's quite an old water fountain. But that, that's a good question and we'll certainly make sure that our Parks Division takes care of that. But there is water access in the restrooms as well.
All right.
Would this resolution affect the Green Hill Park at all?
Yes, that's included, Green Hill Park.
Okay, I've had some constituents reach out to me saying that they're getting folks from, with Rhode Island plates and Green Hill and out-of-state plates dumping trash there, just coming and dumping their trash out of their cars. So I figured I'd just, while you're here, reiterate.
Okay, it does not trash into the dumpsters. No, this is strictly for the restrooms.
For the restrooms, right.
So we, our staff, our Parks crews removes trash from, and we, we do get that problem as well where people will use the public dumpsters for their, for their trash.
That's right.
But our crews handle, handle the trash removal.
Okay.
And they still will.
All right, do I hear a motion to approve this item?
Same.
All right, we got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that passes. Thank you, Terry. Chief Moynihan, come on up.
Some would.
All right, we got a motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that passes. Thank you, Terry. Chief Moynihan, come on up.
Good evening. So, this is a request for award of flock cameras. I've been watching this technology really for probably the past four years and three being here in South Kingston and kind of watching it evolve. It's a great tool. I want to start by saying that it's not a traffic enforcement tool. I think a lot of people confuse it with, it doesn't detect speed, it doesn't detect, it's not looking for red light violators. It's strictly to assist in criminal investigations. So, it's to identify individuals or vehicles involved in crimes. One of the best pieces of it is that it's really a force multiplier for law enforcement. It's tied to the NCIC computer. So, amber alerts, silver alerts, stolen vehicles. It is constantly scanning license plates that pass by the camera and alert law enforcement when that happens. It's in 5,000 communities across the country, 42 states. Once we get involved in it, we share in that capacity. So, if there is a missing child out of Texas and that car comes up here to Rhode Island and passes through one of our cameras, we're going to alert, alert it to it in real time where law enforcement can respond. After the fact, I mean, we're seeing a lot of crimes that are reported to us with Ring Doorbell cameras and surveillance cameras. One of the biggest challenges we have is those cameras provide a perpendicular view of the street, okay? So, frequently we'll see it's a white four-door vehicle or it's a red pickup truck. And it really doesn't do us much help as far as identifying. What that does now is couple that technology with the flock camera technologies. We can go look at, at certain cameras in the area where the crime was reported and put in specific identifiers. I want to be clear that the cameras, they capture the rear of the vehicle and they capture the license plates. And it has the technology that's running the license plates to hit off of those either federal, state, or our own local hot files, okay, on, to identify cars of interest for us. So, when we go to that database after the fact, when a crime is reported to us and we're looking for that white four-door vehicle or the red pickup truck, it can now give us some leads to look at who was in the area at the time to further our investigation. So, the data contained in the flock camera, again, is used on a need-to-know basis, okay? And it would be strictly audited by us and by our personnel and basically only be utilized during criminal investigations. So, it's not something that, that is frequently queried to see who's in certain areas. It's based off of criminal investigations and there's an audit trail that's built into it that when authorized users are using it, they have to put a corresponding case in it and then we would track that over time to ensure that it's being used properly. As I said, I've been watching this technology for many years. I wanted to see how it rolled out in other communities. There's eleven communities in Rhode Island that have this technology currently. There's three that are also going within the week, excuse me, to their council to look for it. Our neighbors, both Narragansett and North Kingston, have it as well. So, it's important. It's a great tool. I've seen it firsthand be used in other communities. Last year, we had two overdue elderly residents here in our town. And we were, I was able to leverage the support from other communities that had it. And we were able to provide the family with some information of when that car was last seen in those communities. And it helped them to kind of track down to say, okay, they're up in East Providence, they're up in Providence at a friend's house and reunite those families. So, you know, I'm here, I can answer any questions you have, but really, it's, this is a great technology that we're looking to bring in as a force multiplier here. I think would really help us in our investigations and for the safety of the residents here and help us solve a lot of the crimes that are happening in our communities.
Chief, quick question. If we approve this, where will these cameras be located? Is this like a satellite coming down? How does this work?
Yeah, so the exact location, we wouldn't, we wouldn't make that public, obviously, because people would know where they are and then they, it defeats the purpose of the cameras being there. So, the knowledge that the cameras are there is the deterrent. The specific locations wouldn't be revealed.
Okay. So, I guess implicit in what you just said there, you know, it can only work in certain locations. So, it won't work throughout town. It'll actually be somewhere, I don't know, physically located such that you have to drive by it or be near it such that it can work?
Yeah, so a vehicle would pass by. So, it wouldn't be 100%, but what we look at is, as I said, if we had someone who had a break-in, say there was a house that was broken into in Green Hill. And we had a description of a vehicle, but no plate and a time period, we could look at a camera that was in that area that potentially that car may have passed through. It's not, again, it's not going to be 100% that we're going to capture, but it's a lead and something that we could pursue.
And if you had several cars of the same make and the same color, I guess they would all become leads?
They could all potentially be leads, yes. But it's narrowing down as opposed to, you know, now we have, you know, again, if you have a white four-door vehicle, there's many and oftentimes those just do not go, we can't solve the crime.
And how long have these other towns in Rhode Island been using this, other than the three that are about to approve?
So, obvious, Providence, Cranston have had it. I want to say Cranston's probably been the longest. They've probably had it for four years. And then, as I said, more communities are coming on. There's 11 total in Rhode Island with three in addition right now, working with their councils to approve it.
All right, the technology has only helped to improve, I guess, the efficiency of investigations and precision?
Yes. And just, I did skip over, I started to go down, but the data that's collected, it stores 30 days' worth of data, all right? So, what it would do is those plates that are passing by internally, it records that information, the rear of the plate or the rear of the vehicle and the plate. And then it could be queried up to 30 days. After that, it tapes over itself, all right?
What about for like preservation of evidence purposes?
Yeah, we wouldn't use it then. It would have to be half, you'd have to identify it before that 30 days happens. So, you'd have to have a criminal investigation in order that, why you're querying that information.
And at which point it could be preserved?
Then you would, right. You'd have the data. Once you, once you have it and you identified a vehicle that potentially could be tied to that crime, then you'd be furthering your investigation with that information.
Okay, good.
There are obviously certain Orwellian aspects to this that I think we need to walk through. I understand your point that it's an investigative tool for law enforcement. You mentioned it's billed in the memo principally as a license plate reader, but you said it has the capability to add to that? You gave an example of, I think, a white four-door car, but you didn't have the plate and you can narrow it down to?
So, where it's a license plate reader, what it's doing is all the vehicles that are passing by are now reading, it's reading the plate from that. So, then what you do is query it. So, you could query it for a white four-door vehicle. Different specifics, maybe. We have it that it's a white four-door with a bumper sticker on the back and we query it for that and it would be able, and then from that, where it takes the picture of the back of the, of the vehicle, we capture the plate and then be able to run the plate and further the investigation that way.
It doesn't take pictures of the occupants?
It does not take any of the front. So, that's another big misunderstanding with it is that racial profiling or different things that come into, it's strictly the rear of the vehicle and it's strictly just to capture license plates that may be involved in criminal investigations.
And it's, because it's criminal investigations, then I assume it's also not subject to the Access to Public Records Act?
Correct.
I've actually heard of one example of somebody in a divorce trying to get records of a soon-to-be ex-spouse and where they were on a particular time.
We wouldn't be able to access it because it wouldn't be a criminal investigation. So, we wouldn't even be able to query the system in order for that information being provided.
And without a specific criminal investigation, the data disappears after 30 days anyway?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead.
It's six cameras, right?
Yes.
That are, and then one fixed solar camera?
Yes.
We buy them, we don't lease them, we own them, right?
Yes, we own, but there's, it's, it is a lease. If there's any damage, it's full warranty to the cameras. Another important part of it. And then the service plan. So, the, what we're asking for here is the initial cost with the setup and the cameras. And this six cameras with one fixed camera is 30,000, 300.
Right.
A recurring annual.
Yes, 24,000 is the annuals. It's really the, the lift is the software subscription.
Yes.
Right? Because it's about $1,000 a camera, 6,000 or 24,000.
The cameras are damaged, full warranty, they come out and replace them.
And do you know the life expectancy of the camera? Would you know that?
I don't know it. I mean, basically, when we enter into this is that the cameras are being replaced. You're paying the service agreement to have the camera running. So, if the camera goes down, they can't fix it, they're going to replace it at no charge because of the subscription that we're paying.
Oh, as long as we're renewing the 24,000 dollar, whatever software subscription, they're going to service?
They want the camera up and running because they wouldn't be able to charge you that service.
I just was curious, you know, some things, some equipment we buy for the police, they expire after a certain amount of time. And so, I just didn't know if, if they anticipated the cameras would last five years, 10 years?
And what they've done in other communities is even, they've just had a, an increase in price. And that's again, why I've kind of, I've watched this, has this gone along and it's, and it's building more and more momentum. I wanted to see how, you know, how it rolled out in other communities and how it was perceived and really whether it worked or not. And, but they're also increasing the technology. The cameras are getting better, the better pictures of the rear of the vehicles. So, and they're doing that, replacing those cameras at no cost.
Yeah. I think, I think I'm hearing people want to balance privacy with law enforcement and investigation. So, I think, I think because they don't take a picture of the person in the front and it's the back, I think it could be helpful. And if you're, if you were a person who had an amber or a silver alert, you would want them finding whoever as quickly as possible.
Can I run through a theoretical, just to kind of flesh this out? Understand how this works a little better? All right, let's just say, for example, gray Dodge Caravan, fairly common car. Somehow, some instance occurs in some part of town, the car, the suspected vehicle is a gray Dodge Caravan, okay? Now, this camera picks up every gray Dodge Caravan that is sort of somewhat in proximity. Let's say it's five different vehicles. By virtue of being near where this incident occurred, is there now reasonable suspicion to pull over that Dodge Caravan? Is there? No?
I think it would, again, this would be investigative. It would be to follow up, you know, and using it in these, these instances where, say, a B and A, because you're not going to necessarily be able to query it that quickly. Those real-time alerts, the hot list files, so amber alerts, stolen vehicles, our own internal hot list, that would be instant. But after the fact, when we're going out to a break-in and entering and we talk to witnesses and they say, you know, I saw a gray Dodge Caravan drive away from the scene, there would be a post-investigative follow-up querying in that system. So, it would give, yes, maybe it comes up with one or two gray caravans that passed through the camera during that time. And it would give investigators that lead now to say, okay, to further it down with an interview.
And with respect to those caravans, is there reasonable suspicion to pull over?
No. It would be knock on the door and, and just like we would do if, if we were looking for, you know, in many cases, this is already happening, right? Where we can get lists from the registry of motor vehicle, but we'll have thousands of vehicles to go through as opposed to, this narrows it down. It, it's just another tool really for the investigator to, to narrow down who their suspect pool would be. It would be an interview, though.
Yeah. I'm just, you know, concerned about, you know, the regular, common citizen driving down the road in a fairly common car. And somehow they happen to be driving by some area where, you know, something might have happened. And, and an alleged car that is the same make and model and color as theirs. And then they're subject to, I don't know, potential pull over, potential questioning. I just don't know what's going to happen next.
I think it would be a question and it's really would be our technique on how to go about that, right? Is, is that the investigator could use that as a tool to further their investigation. It doesn't mean that a warrant would be sought or, you know, it's basically identifying that, that could have been involved in a crime.
All right.
So, what if it wasn't a common car like a gray Dodge Caravan? What if it was like a green Kia Soul?
Yes.
Chartreuse?
Yep.
Very unique.
Yep, you can put whatever query. If someone takes their plate off, it'd identify that. If it's a motorcycle, it can identify that, as I said, tinted windows or bumper stickers. There's different, different variables that you can go and, and add in there in the search of it to identify.
So, even if it was a fairly unusual car, this would not lead the officer to automatically assume that this was the person that they were in pursuit of?
Correct.
Okay.
Chief, I'm in favor of the, the one-year contract. I would be interested to know in a year how often officers use this to, you know, to further investigation or to, as an assistance. And I think it's reasonable. I know that in Cranston, it was one of the pilot programs there and they were very satisfied. I concur with my fellow counselors about the privacy issues. My last question is, is the data that's being held, held at the company in Georgia?
Yeah, it's held within there. It's our data.
But it's held in their servers in Georgia.
Well, it would be, I think it's cloud service that they have.
Sure.
And secured within that. And, and to get back to the one-year, I agree with you. I, I, I think the value of this, this is, this is quite a, the service agreement is quite a bit of money. I think we, we do have to keep our eye on it and evaluate it after a year.
I think so, too.
Really look at it closer than that. On top of the auditing and making sure that, that officers are using it correctly, that it's only being used for criminal investigations, right? But also seeing the value of the money that we're spending. And is it, is it helping us and if it's something we should continue on?
Yeah, it's a valuable tool, but, you know, again, like we just talked about, I'd be interested to know in a year how often we use it. So, thank you.
Thanks.
Just for clarification, the way that it reads, and maybe I'm reading it wrong, is we agree for a year with, and it says with the subsequent, we're new, is it definite to a year or you're, is it Chief, Chief Moynihan discretion whether we go for a year two?
Yeah, we could, we, it would be a discretion of whether we go for year two.
Okay. I mean, I, yeah, because I mean, we might not know a lot after one year anyway, but I'd be curious to know. But I think, I think it's, if I were the mother looking for a missing child, I would be wanting you to have this, so.
It is, as I said, it's a great tool for us and I think the citizens of the town and when they see it working in other communities, it's something that we really should have. And it's frustrating when we do have limited information to go on and we can't, when there are tools out there that could assist us.
Absolutely.
All right, do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve item 10J, 9J?
9H, thank you.
It's J?
Yep, 9J.
9J.
All right, we got a motion.
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that passes. Thank you, chief.
Great, thank you.
All right, that's now going to bring us to public comment. Anyone in the audience who wishes to speak on any matter, invite you to come on up. We just ask that you introduce yourself. We're going to leave you to five minutes. Once you begin speaking, this clock over here is going to begin counting down. We ask that you use that to sort of pace yourself to stay within the five. With that said, first come, first served. Come on up. Oh, Tiger, can you push the button on the right?
I kept turning it off, I'm sorry. I forgot to turn it back on. Thank you. My name's Tiger Patrick, local VFW commander, longtime resident, class of '81, proud graduate of South Kingston High School. Wanted to come here today to thank you all for participating in our parade. This year was dedicated to welcoming home our Vietnam veterans. And I will tell you, the response to the banner, to the coins and to the parade ceremony itself with Senator Reed and Congressman Magazinor, I forgot his name, was outstanding. We had at least 30 call messages through our voicemail at the post, countless social media stuff. And so, we're looking at maybe doing that annually. And so, that's kind of why I'm, one of the reasons why I'm here today. We had a banner that we put up for the month of June, excuse me, yeah, for the month of May, welcoming home Vietnam veterans there across from CVS. We have to go through RIDOT for that as a process to get a permit. And I wanted to give a shout out to Lance Whaley, who used your town cherry picker to once again put up the banner for us and does a great job. And this year, this is the third or fourth time we've done this. And this year, this is the third or fourth time we've done this. We got the right size, right spot, so now that we can do it both ways. We only had a one-sided banner before. And so it got me to thinking and talking with Kenny Burke over at the Two Hundred and Fiftyth Committee, which I'm a member of, but have not attended a meeting yet since I've been pressing legislation. Thankfully, that stuff's over. Tomorrow's our first meeting. We're looking at, the reason why I'm here is to see what your vibe would be when you apply for a banner permit. It's only for twenty-eight days, and what I would like to do is ask RIDE for two months to have it up. The reason being is having it up during the whole month of July and August. We want to do another welcome home Vietnam veterans, but also this is next year is the fifth anniversary of the Purple Heart Trail opening. I drove that legislation and got real busy doing everything else as a state commander and all that for the VFW. I want to make some hay, and I want to drive that initiative again to make it more of a destination spot, which was the original impetus to have it more attractive to other Purple Heart veterans out there to bring them here. Anyway, going to talk to Kenny to see if we can't have a two-sided panel, one, you know, mentioning Purple Heart and also Vietnam veteran welcome home. And then the other side would be dedicated to whatever the project is for the Two Hundred and Fiftyth. But I wanted to see if there wasn't some town ordinance or something that would preclude us from being able to have a banner up that long, because I got to ask for, it's going to take a few months, I've been informed, to go through the process. So I'm planting a seed today to just see what you think.
All right. Amy, are we aware of anything that would preclude that?
We, the town recently revised some and eliminated some regulations for political signage. This might fall within that category.
So in other words, no, there should not be anything that precludes it?
Copy that. All right, so I'll come back to you later with the idea probably around Christmas, once we get our act. I'm so excited, I've not been to a committee meeting until tomorrow, so we'll see how that goes. I'm sorry that Terry left, I was going to, I had a joke, you know.
Tiger, she's listening on the ride home.
Oh, is she? Oh, yeah, right. You know, the one thing, it's not a parade ceremony unless, Patty, you yell at me for forgetting somebody in the VIP audience. Yeah, oh, yeah, it's you. Oh, you forgot, because this year, but I put mic towards the back when I introduced Rory to do the, you know, the opening remarks, you know, greetings from the town. But you guys are hard, even Jack Reed said, wow, they're tough. And I, oh, yeah, yeah, it's like that.
But you look really nice in your flight uniform.
Actually, it's a tanker, it's a tanker thing. Anyway, I just think, I thought it was funny. I lost my train of thought. But again, I did want to give props to Lance Whaley, who's really cool about stopping what they're, you know, putting into his calendar, because they're so busy, and there's only one cherry picker.
Tiger, Tiger, you are the first one. We did reach, but, you know, just want to finish up.
Oh, I'm I'm really, I'm almost done. I just had, I want to just thank a couple of people. Earlier, I saw a chief has had surgery on his shoulder. I've run Special Olympics bowling for the summer games, this is my twenty-fifth year, and SKPD has been huge with us for years. And him and Monte, Captain Monte Houghton, came in. I have a video on social media where they're all hugging and stuff, because that's how I roll. And lastly, I wanted to thank Rex Eberle and crew for cleaning up the Vietnam monument out at Taylor College Corner. They did a great job at the eleventh hour for me, because I kind of bit off more than we could chew. So that's all I got.
All right, thanks, Tiger.
Go Red Sox.
All right, anyone else in the audience wish to speak? I invite you to come on up.
Good evening. I'm Mary Gail Smith, and I live in Mottucket by the Sea. And back in January of twenty twenty-three, the town decided to cease maintaining some of our roads. And I, my purpose in being here this evening is to provide you with a very brief update about how we're how we're doing. The affected roads in Mottucket by the Sea consist of approximately one point six miles, and these roads had been maintained for some of them more than fifty years. And I personally tried to obtain snow plowing services for the affected roads last winter. We've survived two winters, and mercifully, they were fairly mild winters, and we didn't, you know, get snowed in or have an unfortunate event with emergency vehicles. But the stumbling block for myself and my fellow volunteers in obtaining, trying to obtain plowing services was the question of insurance. And because we don't own our roads and no one knows who owns most of the roads, only four of the roads' ownership is known, and that is the town of South Kingstown is the owner of record of four of those roads due to a tax sale. And as soon as the snowplowers heard that we didn't own the roads and we didn't have insurance, that was the end of the conversation. And it's it's most unfortunate because the roads have deteriorated, some of them very, very badly and severely over the past couple of years. And we do feel that it presents a danger to emergency vehicles as well as to our own personal vehicles. And it's an area of great concern. And I just wanted to let you know, you know, where it stands and that we remain quite concerned about this. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone else in the audience wish to speak? Anybody just come on up?
Is this still on? Okay. I'm Jennifer Nurban. I I think the public comment section having it this late is completely ridiculous. It's ten eighteen, this place is practically empty, and this is why people don't come to these meetings, and the people in this town need to come here and have a voice and be heard and listened to. Jay Wegomont, it's time to step down. Over the last four years, you have had not just one, but multiple DUIs and traffic violations. You just settled your most recent one this past November. This isn't ancient history, it's recent, it's repeated, and it's happening right here in our community, on our roads, in our neighborhoods, around our schools. These incidents show a clear lack of accountability and judgment. Your behavior demonstrates that you're unable to manage your own actions or emotions, let alone serve in a leadership role. This isn't a one-off mistake from decades ago, it's a consistent pattern of poor decisions and disregard for the public that you're meant to serve. Your outburst during the meeting, chasing Anthony Delena into the hallway, was not only inappropriate, but it was a complete failure of leadership, regardless of whether you agree with someone's message. Resorting to emotionally charged actions during an official proceeding is unacceptable. You are expected to be the adult in the room. Instead, you became a spectacle and a distraction. This is a total embarrassment for our town. You are not following the code of conduct here in South Kingstown. Anthony Delena posted the truth that you tried to hide from the public. You were not honest. Whether he posts ten times or one hundred people post once, the message is the same. We do deserve better for those that represent us. Your impaired judgment and inability to maintain composure under pressure have become liabilities to this town. The residents and taxpayers deserve respectful, responsible leadership, and it's time for you to do what's right, seek the help that you need, and resign your position. I also want to talk about our tax rate. The tax rate was eight dollars and ninety-eight cents, and you guys all had the opportunity to lower it to eight dollars and ninety cents, to give that eight cents per thousand back to the taxpayers. And instead, you only lowered it to eight ninety-four, keeping the four cents. That's three hundred and forty thousand that should have gone back to the people who actually pay the tax bills in this town. And I feel like you guys don't clearly, Jay and Rory, you guys don't clearly understand the real impact of property taxes on what it means to be a homeowner trying to make ends meet. Then you guys received another six hundred and forty thousand in investment income, and that's nearly a million in unplanned money. And instead of returning it to the taxpayers, you're already planning on how to run out and spend it. Here's the reality. Seven out of ten households in this town do not have children in the school system. Only three out of ten households do. Yet you guys continue to make financial decisions as if we're all tied to the school budget. You make these decisions in a vacuum, in the back room, not in plain view of the people you're supposed to represent. And no, if they build it, they'll come? No. This isn't a baseball field of dreams. This is our town, which costs a family five hundred thousand to seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars on average just to live here, with an additional nine to ten thousand dollars in taxes. Our designated fund balance should sit between twelve and seventeen percent. We're already at seventeen point four percent, and you won't even return the extra point four percent. Instead, you over-collect, overcharge, and then spend the surplus however you all see fit. That's not fiscal responsibility, that's manipulation. The people paying these taxes are homeowners, their parents, their grandparents, many of whom are on fixed incomes. This community is largely fifty-five and older. And I know that you all know my friend, my very good friend Martha Stamp, who's eighty-eight years old, and she's out looking for a job, not because she wants to, but because she's trying to pay the tax increases. She's eighty-eight years old and job hunting, that's ridiculous. That's the human cost of your decisions. You're supposed to serve the community, not exploit it. That's all I have to say.
All right, anyone else wish to speak? Anybody just come on up to the podium?
Jim O'Neill, Wakefield. Couple of things, taxpayers. I think Mrs. Bergman mentioned at the last meeting, and I'm still concerned, an extra ten thousand square feet, you know, that's five or six million dollars on a hundred and fifty million dollar budget, which is still touch and go. Very concerning, truly concerning. Yet there's nothing in the queue for taxpayers. We've talked about, you know, you know, God almighty, how long have we talked about all these potential tax savings for folks? And it hasn't happened. We have to wait till the end of next year, we'll be lucky to have any tax savings in fiscal year twenty-seven. But my concern is, I think we could live with a lower rating. And I appreciate Jim Manny, and I understand the importance of our double A being one of the better of five cities and towns in the state of Rhode Island. But we're at the point here where we might have to take a couple million dollars out of that unfunded balance account. You know, four, five hundred dollars per family, there's probably four thousand households with at least one person, let's say, over sixty-five in this town. Might cost us a couple million dollars. But in three years, we're going to have, oh, gosh, maybe ten million dollars of new money needed, six and a half, seven million dollars for the bond, principal and interest, and three, four percent for the operations. Yowch, that's only twenty percent of help. And what's really deceiving here is, you know, I brought it up a couple of times here, electricity costs here. Four, five hundred dollars is just a minimum, what a lot of folks had to pay for increases this winter for public policy situations, not for the gas, for the oil, et cetera, but this net zero game that needs to be pushed out ten, twenty, thirty years. You need to help these folks here, because where do you see these numbers coming in over the next few years? And we're not doing enough. And there is an age sixty-five that many towns do in this state. Maybe we need enabling legislation, I'm not sure how that works, we've got the tax credit for low income. But Johnston does nine hundred per household, Providence six hundred, Middletown two hundred, I can go through a whole list. We're nothing, we're zero. And that's the easy way out to do this elderly one. Let's put a number on it, like I told you many times about Black Island, said, let's get this going, because the rental registry is going to be a real bear to handle, and you're going to have to make amendments over the years. So you can do that now. If you need enabling legislation, put it in January second, no more fooling around next year at the General Assembly. And now let's get to Wedgemont here, because I read too much in the paper, I really can't stand it. Providence says he's on paid leave, he is an employee down here, he was elected to office, unknown to the public about his terrorism behind the wheel of a car the previous five, six years before he was elected. And I don't understand, because here's paid leave in Providence, and here he is sitting here this evening. Is this a new, you know, am I going to meet one of you afterwards out in the parking lot now? It's okay to threaten the public? This is, you know, what happened to the moral high ground we used to take here? And what bothers me here, I know most of you up here, and I don't understand why you hid the history from the public before last year's election. You know, having five Democrats, fine, but you know, four, if you had a Republican, so what? Or an independent? I mean, this is craziness that 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 was so important, that you hid information from the public. And it's just nuts. And Mr. Wedgemont keeps saying he's paid his debt, self-diagnosis doesn't work, you can ask anybody who understands the problems of alcohol, and there are many people we know. You're not cured, you are not cured. And when he just, he showed the anger two weeks ago when he chased these folks out in the corridor. Anger is one of the relapses you find. Just read all your books on alcoholism and and the and the problem with the disease. So you haven't paid your dues, and nor have you ever told the truth to the public. And then finally, I really have a beef with the meeting two two weeks ago, and I'm directing this to the solicitor, because I didn't like the treatment when Ms. Mahalan was up here at the end of the meeting. I've been to so many meetings, you haven't been, what I've been to for zoning decisions, planning board, and the rest. But I find her snarky, her remarks, unprofessional, rude, abrupt, and this is not the kind of person that we need in the solicitor's office in this town. And I've been to so many meetings, if you ever want to talk about this full time, I'd be happy to. But we need to, I think, change her position here, but change Ursula Rich and Ty's position. I think their time is up, that they've served the town. Thank you.
All right, Jim. Okay, anyone else in the audience wish to speak?
Aiden O'Sullivan, I'm from Wakefield. I just wanted to come to speak tonight in support of the idea of a South Kingstown Youth Advisory Board. I saw it brought up at the last meeting, and I saw how Councilman Wedgemont was inspired by Governor McKee's youth, Young Leaders Group, which I am an executive board member of. So I just want to come speak about it a little bit, give you guys an idea of the group and why I think it's a good idea or a similar, you know, idea in South Kingstown. So for the governor's group, we have members from all across the state, from about ages seventeen to twenty-five. We meet about every two weeks on Zoom and occasionally in person with a variety of guest speakers, which have included Congressman Gabe Ammo, pollster Frank Luntz, Louisiana's Lieutenant Governor Billy Nungesser, Biden White House official Daniel Ko, amongst many others from many different fields. We have made policy presentations to the governor's staff, and we, our intention is essentially to get young Rhode Islanders networking with each other and with other talented individuals across the country while helping them gain prowess and moxie in government and civics. Finally, the group is apolitical. Um, finally, the group is apolitical, and it is not an official committee within the governor's office. Um, I think a similar structure would be great for South Kingstown, obviously accommodated to the town's needs. But first, I just wanted to bring, address a few of the concerns you guys had with the proposal. Obviously, I think the biggest one is the town's staffage issue, um, which is a completely fair issue. I think a good idea potentially could be to work with the school as much as possible. Schools obviously know the kids the best out of anybody, they know who would serve well on this, who would help the council and the town in achieving its priorities for young people. Um, and I think the school would also help ease that workload, potentially. Um, also, I heard concerns about age range, which is completely fair idea and concern. 14 to 22 might be too wide, it's very fair, um, discussion. But what I'll say is that, if I, when I was 14 years old, having somebody who was 21, 22, who was in college, who's been through high school, dealt with college applications, job applications, whatever, I would have loved that. It would have made me, I think, a much better person, and a much better student and human being at that age, and I would have progressed at a much rapider rate. Um, so I think this idea would just provide unparalleled opportunities for young people in South Kingstown, and help our government better understand the needs of our youth, which I think can oftentimes be misrepresented or misunderstood. Um, and also, many young people in our town have a deep interest in government. Take, for instance, the United States Senate Page Program, which is the most competitive, uh, program for teenagers interested in government. This summer, South Kingstown High School students Jay Thornburg and Sean Aguirre are serving as Pages in Washington DC. And last summer, Abby Bavigan was a Page as well. This is unheard of for a town of South Kingstown's size. I think speaks to the quality of people we have, and that I think our town can call upon. I think to not take it full advantage of this great resource would be a shame, and I wholeheartedly believe that this board would help South Kingstown thrive while helping our young people become even better themselves. Ultimately, the decision rests with you, but if you want any help in forming a group, I'd love to help. That's all I have to say, and have a good evening.
Aiden, could you please tell us what you're doing now and how you started with this? I, I, otherwise, I'm gonna have to brag for you, but I want you to do it.
Uh, so, first, I just want to give a shout out to the 300th Anniversary Committee, without them, and, um, two history teachers I had in high school, and the principal of South Kingstown High School, Dr. Chip McGare, and teachers, uh, Mr. Pierce or Brandon Pierce, and Mrs. Kathy Fogarty, I wouldn't be here in this position. Um, basically, how I got involved in the governor's group was, I was at a bill signing, and the governor approached me and said, hey, we're forming this group, I'd love for talented young people like you to come along and help me. So that sort of set me on this path of being involved in government. Um, so, I've since been a part-time, uh, intern in the Secretary of State's Elections Division. Um, I'm involved in political issues down in Georgia, I attend Emory in Atlanta, and, um, currently, I'm serving as, I actually just had my first day as an intern for Senator Sheldon Whitehouse.
I'm so excited about that. And you also started the civics club at the high school. And you and Jack Cadman came to these meetings every single week. You gave us the impassioned testimony with the clothes on, the clothes off, and there was one of his friends.
That was not me, that was, uh, Billy Gates.
Yeah.
Yeah. He, he was much more creative than me.
And now, how old are you, Aiden?
Uh, 20. I turned 20.
So you're not even 21 years old, and you're now an exceptional young man, and you have been since you were, I don't know, when we first met you, like, 17?
17, yeah.
Yeah, so, thank you for coming here. Your, your words and your, the way that you have lived your life, and to now just be 20 years old and so well put together, and, well, you're in leadership at Emory also, right?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, uh, I'm a second-year senator in our state government, so.
Yeah, you're, you're the real deal.
Excellent stuff, Aiden, and it's great to see you here. I know you're on summer break now for a little bit, short period of time?
Yeah, I've been back for about a month now, but I've been working my job at Aunt Carrie's in Pointe, so I haven't been able to come by, say hello.
Bring us clam cakes.
Keep making us proud, Nate. Great job here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Cognite's a nice look, too.
You can thank my dad for that one.
Really good.
So, Aiden, I, I, I'm probably the only one who's never met you, and I just wanted to comment, you did a great job. And my concerns are really about, once you memorialize it as a board and commission, it becomes like very cumbersome. And I, I talked to Patty this week about a number of things, and this was one of them, and I said, we can do something differently, like, we can use the civics club, we can say, we invite all South Kingstown youth to a town council meeting twice a year, so that every student can give their input. Like, we could do it almost bigger and differently, rather than be lockstep into like, we must post an agenda, somebody must post minutes, then it has to do this open meetings thing. And that's a lot of what I don't like, I don't like that part of it, but I like the idea of, like, we would, I would want to, to meet, to, I think somebody's been to the high school civics club here, you, right? So like, we want, we, people want to be involved in that way, but I also want to do that bigger way, without the cumbersome of an advisory board that has like, it wouldn't feel to me the same if five people participate once a month, or we open it up to anyone and everyone whenever we decide that it would be important. And that's kind of where I'm thinking.
Yeah, I, I definitely see that, because obviously, like, you know, when I served on the 300th Committee, like, Terry Murphy was like, sort of the staff liaison, and I know Terry was constantly working and doing stuff. Um, and that's part of also, like, what we do with the governor's group, is that, like, because we aren't officially, like, you know, signing a bill for the governor or anything. Um, we're essentially just meeting with him, you know, it, it's almost like him meeting just with concerned constituents, essentially. Um, and I think there's definitely, you know, nothing is set in stone, I'd love to, you know, flesh out different ideas and whatnot.
I, I think you're on to something. You mentioned, um, the connection to the high school, aside from the civics club. Dr. McGare has an advisory group of students that he meets with, and a couple of times when I was on school committee, I met with them specifically about the high school project. That might be a good vehicle for this.
Yeah. All right. Thank you, Aiden.
Thank you.
Brett Harrington, Wakefield. My birthday, by the way, 62, 62 years old today. And here, I'm spending it with you guys. That's how sad I am. Anyway, that's a great idea, I really like that idea. And I think another idea, and I'd like you helpful, and I want to get your number before I leave, um, I'd like to start a taxpayers advisory committee, where we can be heard, because this is useless, I might as well shut it off. But anyway, um, yeah, it's a great idea, you know, because everybody needs to be heard, and I've been up here before to say that to you guys, I, I want to be heard. They, they listen to me, but, right, you want things to get done, right? That's what we want, we just want to be.
Hey Brett, let me just ask you to direct your comments to the council.
I want to be listened to, and I don't want to wait four hours, and then my communications to be totally ignored. Nothing that I brought to this council has, you know, you guys are all, you know, like, great, thanks Brett, have a sit, sit down. I'd like my ideas to be thought, to be heard, and to be acted on, just like these young kids, you know? Um, they're young, I'm not, we all want to be heard. Taxpayers need to be heard. And we're not, we're not. Only certain few are heard, and you say, well, he's, this is what he said about a month ago. Yeah? Well, what's been done about it? Nothing. It's very frustrating to, like, even, even the stuff now, like, I'm glad that, you know, the tuna cloister bars getting their feet on the ground and things are being done for them. But I say to myself as I'm looking in the paper, we had a fire a year and a half ago, does anybody remember, 210? Where was the outcry for them? Where was the, uh, you know, Rex Center Job Fair for them? You know? Just funny. Um, well, that was my train of thought, but, uh, yeah, but anyway, um, my main point is I think it's a good idea, and if we're gonna form a committee for the kids, I think we need to form a, a committee for the old people like myself, so maybe that way, I can be heard just like you guys. And like, like, uh, was said earlier, um, this whole town is basically old people like me. They either don't have kids, or their kids are out of the house, so we need to be heard, you know? That's it.
All right, thank you. Okay, that's gonna bring us to the end here. Or is there anyone else who hasn't spoken who wishes to speak? If so, I invite a come on up. All right, it's gonna bring us to the end here. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
All right, we got a motion, a second, a discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, this meeting is over.